City Council meeting for Tuesday, April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. And tonight, we're led our student pledge by Tessa Smith, Pennycamp Elementary, and Sherry Wazansky, our principal. You guys come on down. And when they get up here, everyone will rise when they get here. For our pledge of allegiance. Secret, secret, Michael. Mary, give me your coat, you'll be seen. Give me your coat, you'll be seen. Hold it close to your mouth, and you're gonna, we're all gonna follow you. So, we're ready to go, and aim towards the flag?
Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done, Tessa. You have some practice, haven't you? All right, so tell us who's here tonight, and then we're gonna have your principal talk about you.
Um, my friend Wish. My friend Wish is here.
Oh, hello, Wish. Who else?
And my mom and dad.
My mom and dad. Are the rest of you people your friends here tonight, too? Yes, they're all your friends. Good answer.
And then, Principal Wazansky.
Good call.
And my friend Amy Holworth.
Oh, good job. Thanks for pinning for that one. Another principal here to talk about you.
So, Tessa, if, oh, yeah, we're talking about, we're gonna brag on you for a second. There is nobody easier to talk about than Tessa Smith. If we had a thesaurus for the words responsible synonyms for, she defines that. But not only is she a superstar student and responsible, she probably could house it, I'd say, wouldn't you say, mom and dad at this age? I mean, she's like uber responsible, but she's also a really empathetic person. She cares deeply for others, and she shows it, and she thinks about it and talks about it, and is always looking for ways to help other people. So, we're so proud to have her at Pennycamp, and next year, the middle school will also be so lucky to have her as a contributor in their community.
Congratulations. Tessa, we're all proud of you, but the entire city council, even your friend, Amy Holworth. The City of Manhattan Beach, Manhattan School District recognizes you, Tessa Smith, Pennycamp Elementary School, for outstanding citizenship in the Manhattan Beach Unified School District. Congratulations. This is for you. Hey, mom and dad, you wanna step up and get some pictures? Or your friend Wish, wanna step up here? Council will all get a picture together. Come on up, Tessa, you wanna, there you go, we're all gonna stand. Today we are, is a special day.
Oh, sorry.
And then to your right, lady in the white jacket. All right. It only gets better from here up. All right, the call to me, and it was done. Pledge of the flag, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Holworth.
Here.
Councilmember Lesser. Councilmember Napolitano.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Franklin.
Here.
Mayor Montgomery.
I am here as well. And we're gonna go with something out of order here, but I thought we do this every time. I was asked by one of our longtime residents and a veteran to start recognizing our veterans. Those who have served, those that are also in the military now, and even the reservists that are here, wanna recognize you for your service. Anybody here that's been in the military or active military or reserves, stand up. So we know who, just stand up so we know who you are.
Thank you. All right, this is good. So, we have a packed ceremonial calendar. What I'm gonna do is start off with the help of my colleagues here. I'm gonna call up one team at a time with their coaches, certificates, and city pins, and then we're gonna weather very, and we're gonna get one grid picture together, one big group picture. So, with your two help, we're gonna do certificates of the first team, coaches after that, and then next player, next team. Let's start us off. And we're gonna call you down.
Yes.
Would you mind if I do a little intro for all the teams before we start?
You wanna save it at the end?
I think it makes more sense at the beginning.
Then come on up here. You have two minutes, nothing more.
You're already, trust me, they know I talk fast. Honorable mayor and city council members, thank you for the opportunity to attend this evening to celebrate five amazing teams. I'm Krista Skinner, and I'm the regional commissioner for AYSO Region Eighteen, serving Manhattan and Hermosa Beach. As you know, AYSO is an all-volunteer organization, and our region provides a fun, fair, and safe place for almost thirty-three hundred players to play soccer every year. That's about ten percent of the population of the city that we enroll in our program, plus parents and spectators, means we hold events for five to seven thousand people every weekend in the fall, and about half that again in the spring. It definitely keeps us busy. We also appreciate the partnership we have with the Parks and Rec Department that allows us to offer a recreational soccer program accessible to everyone that wants to play the beautiful game. The five teams before you have each won the AYSO Western States Championship in their respective divisions, which is truly a special accomplishment. Region Eighteen is one of six regions in Area One D, which also includes North and South Redondo, Hawthorne, El Segundo, and Restchester. We're part of Section One, which consists of sixty-seven regions stretching from Santa Monica east to Nevada and south to San Pedro. The Western States Championship consists of teams from two hundred and thirty-five regions in four sections from Washington, Oregon, California, Nevada, and Hawaii, containing a total of over two hundred thousand players. Our region is consistently one of the two largest AYSO regions in the U.S., and we were honored this year as Region of the Year in our section. We have five teams here tonight that represented our region across league and All-Star play. The two league teams began playing together last September, winning our local beach cup championship, the Area One D Tournament of Champions, Section One Championship, and finally, Western States. It's truly an achievement for our league teams to progress to Western States. We've only had three previous league champions since we started tracking in two thousand eight. Our three All-Star teams were formed after the end of the fall season, and their journey included winning the Area One D All-Star Tournament, Section One Championship, and Western States Championship. They will join the list of thirteen previous All-Star champions from our region, some of which you may remember seeing in previous years. In addition to being honored tonight, these teams will be added to the banner hanging at Marine Avenue Park with past champions. All yours.
There goes my speech. Thank you for taking care of that for me. I love it when that happens. Thanks, Krista. All right, here we go. Team One, you're gonna call out, you're gonna let me know who the names are, and I'm gonna call them. Black Mambas, we're gonna call a Kai Billett. Come on down, Kai. Andrew Fox, I know Andrew's dad. Where's Andrew? There he is. And is that Kai? Garcia, where's Kai at? Kai's coming down.
That's a popular name.
Sam Kelly. Wen Levy, where's Wen? Cruz Ludwig, where's Cruz? Raphael, Marchese, and where's Raphael? There he is. Jack, where's Jack? Where's he? There's Jack. Austin, where's Austin?
Way to go, Austin.
All right, now our coaches, though, guys don't go anywhere. Coach, where's James Moser? James, coach? And Jeff Ludwig, where's Coach Ludwig? Now, they're all here to give a round of applause and take your photos now of this one group. One mom is your camera member to the right.
One, two, three.
One more, don't go anywhere, one more.
One, two, three, go.
All right, congratulations to you guys. All right, Coach, this is gonna be a team storm. Victoria Buxton, where's Victoria? Ten and under girls. Madison Price. Skylar, where's Skylar? Well, now we're getting feedback, so hopefully it goes away. Elise Myers. Dylan Purdy. Sophia Finale, where's Sophia?
Oh, okay, so where's Sophia? Congratulations.
Berkeley?
Way to go, all the metal, look at that bling.
Maybe we can mute them. Marlo Talbot. Alexandra Torres, she's not here. There, she is. What a coincidence, Coach Christopher Talbot. And Nicole Kilman, come on down, Nicole. Now that we're all here, we're giving a round of applause. Everybody turn that way for your picture.
One, two, three.
Don't move, lady in the white jacket goes next, goes next, goes next, goes next, goes next.
Excuse me, if someone in the audience has their cellphone on watching the meeting, can you mute it?
We're getting a reverb back when someone's cellphone is on.
Yes, somebody has their cellphone on.
Silent, off, or step outside the lobby? We're getting that feedback when someone's phone is on here. All right, that should do it. Twelve and under boys, All-Stars. Braden Ballack, where's Braden? Jackson, Jackson. Tyler Buxton. Is Tyler not here? All right. Gage Harris. Not here. Liam Legrand. Kenan Masaki, where's Kenan at? There he is. Nathaniel Newbauer. Okay. I still have more left. Marco Olsen. Casey Ryan. Kenan Wachvogel. Is that Dave Wachvogel's grandson? All right. You know your granddad. Dave Wachvogel, we know that name. Owen, honey, where's Owen? Noah Wright? Not here. All right, let's call the coaches down. Timothy Harris? Andrew, honey, where's your other co, there he is. Now that we're gonna give them all a round of applause, and the coaches here have turned around. There we go. Coach, lady in the tan hat. Lady in the tan hat, no. All right, lady in the white jacket. All right, congratulations to you. Oh, no, we're not done yet. Jaguars, ten and under girls, All-Star, Olivia Baker. Riley Barker? Okay. June Birdy? Alexis. We'll call you Jane instead of June. Maya Karam, is Maya here? Maya's coming down.
Maya, great job.
Olivia Moore? Not here. Elise Myers? All-Star. Kennedy O'Brien. Now you get two pins. Savannah Wang. And our coach, Luke Myers. And assistant coach, Anthony Wang. Now we can give a round of applause, and thank you for being here. All right, this is our, not less the last, is Team Storm, fourteen under girls, All-Stars. Isabella Amy. Tristan Del Rego, where's Tristan? Julia, thanks, did you hear it? Come on.
Oh, Sharks?
Yeah, we'll change the team name as it comes around. Kylie. Yep. Katie Maloney. It's Katie. Desiree Ortiz. Olivia Reed. Gianna Sannella. Tara Shapuri, we know that name. Vivian Stubber, where's Vivian? Giada Talbot. Yeah, Talbot's gonna form their own team. Kayden Singh, is Kayden here? Juliet Wetzel. Isn't that here? And.
Oh, Julian?
Juliette. Charlotte Wright.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And what team are you?
Sharks.
There you go. Wait, we got our coaches to recognize. Uh, Coach Talbot again. And Scott Stubber, assistant coach. Wait for AC to get here. There he is, Scott's here. Thanks, man, glad you're here. Now, tell them what team you are again.
The Sharks.
There you go, so you want a little energy, like, go Sharks!
The Sharks!
Now we're gonna, congratulations. And then look to the lady in the tan hat first. One more, lady in white. Yeah, congratulations, ladies. We'll get the repented with the right team name for you. All right? Congratulations. We'll give them to your coach. We'll get the new ones with your coach to you. Thanks, man, appreciate it. You can thank, Krista, where'd Krista go? Oh, hey, Krista, thanks for making it all happen. Do you wanna bring your, for a green picture? Okay. Hey, can we get all the players, the coaches, try to get names, we can't have one group picture right around the circle here? Every player, every coach, pretty much the whole room. Wish, you gonna jump out here, too? What about you two guys? I'm gonna stand behind you two. You know, we're gonna stand behind you, aim that way. Aim that way. Everybody squeeze in, you can do it. Hey, girls, girls, why don't you come over here and put in your shirts? Krista, Krista!
Oh, we get the hammer, guys.
Krista! Krista, Krista! Krista!
Krista, 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 Krista!
Guys, know the deal, one, two, three, eyes on me. If you're smiling, keep smiling, make sure you can see your face behind your certificate, keep looking at me while you do it.
Hey, Krista, you got my shoes for me? You're good, come on up. You wanna hang back here? Right here to the center?
All right, look at Miss Loder in the middle.
You good?
They probably didn't, I mean.
Okay, Roxbury ropes are up? Yep. Where's everyone going? We have plenty of hours of city council meetings to talk about. Sure you wanna stay around? Who said council was boring?
I'll have a shout out to Russ Allen, he's the field coordinator.
Hey, thank you all for being here, much appreciated. All right, folks, takes care of so many on calendar. We're gonna move on to item E, approval of agenda and waiver of forbidding ordinances. Ask my colleagues anything they'd like to pull.
Wait, are you asking for polls?
If you have any polls, yes.
Item number seven here. How come we still have feedback?
Do you still hear the feedback? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Oh, okay.
We're still getting feedback, can you? Just wait for a second, we get rid of the feedback.
All right, let me turn my phone off again, see what happens.
Is it just your mic?
Are you taping this meeting, Councilmember Holworth?
No, I've never, we've never, it's been on before, it's never been a problem. But maybe it is. I don't care.
Lisa, why, can we, Lisa?
Not my phone.
Can we close those doors? Thank you.
It's not my phone, because it's off. I'm not to blame.
This is off?
Yeah.
Just don't laugh, whatever you need.
All right, one items to be pulled off the agenda. So far, it's item number seven.
Nothing else for me.
Anyone else? I have one, item number eight. I need a second, is there anything else? We have a first from Councilmember, I'm sorry, reset itself. Councilor Holworth, and second by Councilmember Lesser. I apologize to the audio, folks, we're gonna work through it. I see our IT director's got a hammer with him, that's good. Make your motion, and there's your, you can still vote on the screen.
Motion passes five zero.
Can we turn it off in the chamber?
Did we check the, the iPad, is everybody's iPad audio off? Like, would that make a difference? There's no, okay.
What, what, what? All right, folks, we're gonna get through it. Next one up is the City Council, the community organization announcements of upcoming events. One minute per person. We're waiting for a second, so you'll see the red light go up, Lee, on the microphone in front of you. When the red light goes on, your microphone, you'll know it's live.
Um, I'm here today to announce the Leadership Manhattan Beach Class of Two Thousand Twenty-Three Class Project. The LMB Class of Two Thousand Twenty-Three will unveil the Single Mom Project Nutrition Pantry, which includes six Feast Certified Health Education Scholarships at a ribbon cutting, ten AM, on May twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, at the Richstone Family Center in Hawthorne, California. The public is invited, and light refreshments will be served. The ceremony will also honor the generous sponsors and donors who made this year's project possible. The Single Mom Project has been serving families for two years with the help of Trader Joe's and the Richstone Family Center. The Nutrition Pantry's completion will increase the number of families the facility can serve weekly to fifty, more than double the current. weekly to 50, more than double the current capacity. The pantry will provide storage space for both perishable, non-perishable, and meal prep items. A lack of healthy food can lead to diabetes, obesity, and heart disease. The goal of working with the Richstone Family Center, the Single Mom Project, and Feast for All is to provide parents with the tools to create and teach their children about preparing healthy meals. I hope to see you all there on Saturday, May 20th, 2023, at 10 a.m. It's only one hour. It'll be fun. For more information, go to Leadership Manhattan Beach, leadershipmb.org slash class projects. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Lee. Our next speaker?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Julie Justice McGinnity, and I'm here this evening to invite you and all of the members of the public to a community meeting about the Scout House Rebuild Project. Friends of the Senior and Scout Community Center are hosting this community meeting on Monday, May 1st, at 5:00 p.m. in the Ocean Ball Banquet Hall at Jocelyn Center. At this session, Louis tomorrow, the architect of the project, will be presenting the latest plans. And we will also have the city staff on hand to answer questions about the permitting process, which includes the traffic study, the noise study, and the parking studies. So again, that's Monday, May 1st, at 5:00 p.m. in the Jocelyn Community Center. All are welcome. And I have a few extra copies of our postcard invite. If anybody's interested, I'm happy to give you one. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Our next speaker?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the Council. My name is Josh Murray, and I am here on behalf of Manhattan Beach Library. Teens are invited to celebrate National Poetry Month tomorrow, Wednesday, April 19th, from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. by designing a poetry-inspired tote bag. Celebrate National Poetry Month by designing your very own poetry-inspired tote bag to carry all of your library books and more. Learn how to discover poets and poetry at the library while you decorate your tote. And this program will be for teens in grades six to 12. Attendance is limited and advanced registration is highly encouraged through our website, lacountylibrary.org. As of this afternoon, we do have several spaces available, so I hope the teens in the area want to create their very own poetry tote bag. Thank you.
Hey Josh, for a second?
Yes.
Can you use your power to ask to kind of clean the windows off the north side of the library, please?
I will request that, yes.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker?
Hello, everyone, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Alan Stewart. I'm the Cultural Arts Manager. And there's a couple of things I would like to announce today. I would like to take this opportunity to invite everyone to the opening reception of our new exhibition, Swell, at the Manhattan Beach Art Center. In the spirit of collaboration and community, the Manhattan Beach Art Center has partnered with the newly opened Gallery 208 and will be running concurrent exhibitions inspired by surfing. Please join us this Friday, April 21st, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Manhattan Beach Art Center for the opening reception for Swell. And then migrate on over to Gallery 208, right here in downtown, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. for the opening of that exhibition entitled Hot Batch. In addition to the artwork on display, the side gallery at the Manhattan Beach Art Center will feature an interactive craft related to the exhibition that members of the public can create themselves. Beverages and light refreshments will be served at both locations. We hope to see everyone there. And the next thing I would like to announce is the Parks and Recreation Department would also like to invite everyone to the Sand Dune Park Community Meeting. Please join us at the Sand Dune Park on Sunday, April 30th, at 3:00 p.m. to discuss the future of the park and the facilities there. If you're not able to make it to the park in person on Sunday, please follow the QR code link on the postcard. I believe we have the postcards upstairs in Parks and Rec. And please fill out a brief survey to let us know how you feel about this project. Thank you.
Thank you. And a shout out to Anlin and Parks and Rec. Today, both of you missed it. We had our Boat Bridges Artist mural. If you look outside City Hall, the southern-facing wall is now a fantastic mural called Midnight Blue. So why don't you walk outside during our break, go around the corner, take a look at that. So well done.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. I'm Janet Jones from the Library Commission, here to announce a free, yet free gift to the city from the City of Manhattan Beach and the Strand House Restaurant. It is a tribute to the eighties by Identity Theft, the band. We want everybody to come down Saturday, April 29th, from 3:00 to 4:30. There will, it'll be performed outside on the stage in the back of the library. You can dance for an hour and a half. You can also get free coupons brought to you for Bruko, Zink and Shade, et cetera. And we will have a free book giveaway. We want you to come into the library and see how fantastic it is. But most importantly, we want you to come and have a fabulous time on April 29th. Thanks.
Thank you, Janet. Catchy band name, by the way.
You what?
I said it's a catchy band name, by the way.
Catchy name, and they're a catchy band.
Who else is coming to announce events? Anyone? Any other soccer players left? Colleagues?
I just, I wanted, I didn't bring the graphic, and I apologize for that. But we talked about the last meeting. On this Thursday at 6:30, American Martyrs will be a community conversation with Frank Meck. I think that's how you pronounce his name. He is someone who was a skinhead and is no longer, and talks to communities about the experience and in hopes of educating everybody about how dangerous it can be. It's at 6:30. We thank American Martyrs for partnering with the South Bay Coalition Against Tate, as well as the Chamber of Commerce. It's $5 per person and I think $10 per family. So we hope you will join us for a great event.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Lesser?
I want to make an announcement on behalf of the Senior Advisory Committee, and that is for our older adults in our community, the Manhattan Beach Police Department is offering an Older Adult Police Academy. It will be on four Thursdays, beginning September 7th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. And this is an opportunity to learn about law enforcement. There's been a very successful police academy for all residents, including the older adult communities. But this will be a program that's focused more specifically on issues that our older residents have experienced. In particular, the description is Older Adult Academy will provide a deeper understanding of the issues that a Manhattan Beach police officer deals with on a daily basis. The curriculum will be taught by officers and other police department representatives. There will be an announcement on the city website if you're interested, again, starting Thursdays, September 7th through 28th, between 1:00 p.m. and 4:00 p.m. And all are welcome to apply.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Mayor Pretim Franklin?
Yes, hi. So tomorrow, we're gonna have the fifth and final e-bike safety seminar or audience or session at Grandview High School. So we're gonna be talking to all the grades at Grandview. That's the fifth elementary school that we've done this assembly at. We've done the middle school already. The big Kahuna is Maricosta. So we're gonna, we made a commitment to get to Maricosta to talk about e-bike safety and rules of the road before they leave for the summer. We also have American Martyrs. That's gonna be, we're gonna have the assembly there sometime in early May. So by the time, by the time school is out, all the schools will have received the information in their assemblies. And it's a really fun, excuse me, assembly. The kids are really engaged. This is the follow-up material that will go home with the students. It's basically a hanger. And on one side, it talks about e-bike rules of the road. Because they're young kids, don't expect them to follow the rules of the road if they don't know the rules of the road. So parents, you can enforce this, please, and then also on e-bike safety. So we're looking forward to a safe summer. So parents, please review this information when you get it at home with your students and children. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mayor Pretim Franklin. That's his pet project is bike safety. So we refer all questions to Mayor Pretim Franklin regarding bike safety. Appreciate that, Joe.
Sure.
I've got two. My Hebrew is a little rusty. Yom Hashoah, National Holocaust Remembrance Day. How many of you know that? No, I'm not Jewish. I am born and raised Catholic, and I'm a product of Catholic private school education. But many of my friends are Jewish and non-Jewish alike. We honor, respect everybody's religion, whatever that may be. I was not asked to mention this. No, did I tell any of my colleagues I was doing this? I did it to have everybody, whenever you speak tonight, and everyone's comments are welcome, just keep them in the back of mind perspective. That's all. The second, Martha, do you have the slide, please? Mayor's coffee? Thank you. So those who wondered why was the coffee being today, that was purely by accident. I get caffeine before I came there. People thought it was today. Those who showed up, thank you. And PD for showing up at the same time. No, I did not call PD to be there during my mayor's coffee. But it is next week, April 25th, the Coffee Bean and Tea Leaf. And that is at 2:30. Is that correct, Martha? 2:30, 3:30 next week, 25th. That is all I have. We're gonna move on to... No, they gave us a gift card years ago. I never used it. So I'm gonna cash out my gift card from 2019. Just wondering if I show up if I get free coffee. Yeah, sure. Till my gift card runs out.
You don't even drink coffee.
Hence the name, Tea Leaf. Public comments, these are three minutes per person. Speakers may provide public comments on any item not on tonight's agenda. And if you do speak on item on tonight's agenda, realize you don't get a second bite the album. When the item comes up, you can't talk about it again. So this is a heads up about that. Those who Zoom will go behind the speakers here in the council chambers. Let's go with our first public comment in person tonight. So if you're gonna speak tonight, stick up. You can either speak now, Harriet and Dick Chase, or speak when the item comes up. But you don't speak twice. Your choice.
Don't speak twice?
You do not speak twice.
Okay, I was told to speak first.
But I want to wait till the item comes up that you're concerned about. Anyone else? Public comment, come down here. There you go. Right up there.
Good evening. My name is Alan Kirschenbaum, and I recently had the privilege of completing the Manhattan Beach Police Department's 10-week Community Police Academy program. The program was excellent and led by Sergeant Iniquez and Officer Burello, along with Chief Johnson, Lieutenant Benjamin, and many other officers directly actively involved. We received a short and terrific education in how the MBPD polices our community and the specialties within the police department. They went out of their way to make sure the class didn't just sit around listening to lectures. The hands-on aspects were truly educational. For example, going through shoot-don't-shoot scenarios using laser pistols really brought into context how little time officers have to make tough decisions. The entire program really drove home that the more training our officers have, the better outcomes will be in their responses and decision-making. I think this program is a Manhattan Beach gem, and I want to do everything we can to get as many of our community members as possible to take this one-night-a-week course. It's fun. It'll give our community members a better understanding of all that MBPD does, and it will increase respect and appreciation for our police department. I encourage the City Council to do what it can to increase awareness of the Community Police Academy and for our youth, the Police Explorers Program. Lastly, I want to encourage City Council to focus on the new decals that are on MBPD vehicles. For a variety of good reasons, a new standard for these decals had to be created as the old ones were different sizes, shapes, et cetera. However, the new decals are just black and white, and in my opinion, hard to distinguish from other police and sheriff departments. Let's get MBPD both a good graphic designer and the money to get more colorful and visible logos for all of its vehicles. Given everyone's concerns about where tax dollars go, let's have police vehicles everyone can easily recognize on patrol and know that the City of Manhattan Beach is doing everything possible it can to keep our community safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Our next speaker?
Good evening, Frida Crabtree Kumpa, resident in Manhattan Beach. And I am speaking on an agenda item I will not come back. Promise. People often comment that housing is a fundamental right, and I agree. As a parent, I know that I want my children to be living in a healthy environment that they're able to maintain and keep clean for very obvious reasons. As someone who does outreach to unhoused individuals, I've assisted in finding housing solutions for very many individuals. Fortunately, I can identify several living independent, healthy, productive lives. Unfortunately, I can say, particularly in the last year or two, many of the individuals we have housed are back on the streets because of their addiction and/or mental health issues, which preclude them from successfully maintaining housing. Though I want to, sometimes I can't even support transitional housing, including hotel stays, because the impact of their mental health or addiction issues wouldn't be appropriate. In the last two years, the population of the individuals that I outreach to has changed dramatically to include a majority of young people from 19 to 35 years old, with an increase in female population as well. We typically previously saw between men between 30 and 40 and 65 years old. Most of these individuals display mental health and/or addiction issues. Many of those with addictions admit to stealing in order to maintain their habits, and several have voiced that the only way they're ever gonna get sober is to be in jail. That's sad. Landlords and even shelters are starting to require people to be on medication or seeing a therapist before they will even consider housing them anymore. Many individuals, many only want individuals who are already sober. I've been doing homeless outreach for over 10 years in downtown LA and the beach cities. Things have changed for the worse. We need to take a position on legislation happening up in Sacramento. The state, rather than address mental health and addiction issues, are mostly looking at housing solutions only. Those solutions need to take into account the dire conditions on the streets, the health and safety and well-being of people on those streets and in our community. We need a variety of solutions to meet their needs. We need funding, not just to build and develop permanent solutions, but to plan and develop transitional programs that will prepare people to get ready to live in a house permanently. Please, I urge you to get involved, be a part of the discussion and solution to help people who need it most. Individuals living on the street, in their cars, who are suffering. You have a view of our local issues and can help direct what we're, what will work best in our own community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Hi. Good evening, Council, and to the good citizens of Manhattan Beach. I'm Mary Drummer. I'm a resident of Redondo Beach. I thought all those kids were the welcoming committee, but evidently not. I'm a registered nurse, and I've been a volunteer with Beach Cities Health District for over 17 years. I'm here tonight to highlight Mental Health Awareness Month, which occurs every May. This is an important event for BCHD as mental health is one of our current health priorities. BCHD is partnering with the cities, school districts, and Chambers of Commerce of Manhattan Beach, Hermosa Beach, and Redondo Beach on the community-wide campaign called Mental Health is Health. Mental health is an important part of everyone's well-being. We all have mental health and need to take care of it, much like we take care of our physical health. We're encouraging everyone in the beach cities to prioritize your mental health. Some suggestions are to get support for yourself or someone that you care about. Check in and take care of your mind and body, and attend an event to learn more about mental health. BCHD will put on or participate in more than 20 events during Mental Health Awareness Month. Visit bchd.org/mentalhealthawareness, that's one word, for the calendar of community events, resources, and healthy living tips. Further highlighting BCHD's commitment to their priority of mental health is the All Cove Center for Youth Ages 12 to 25, which strives to take the stigma stigma out of mental health support. The center has had over 900 visits since its opening in January and will sponsor an upcoming eight-week youth grief support session. Other Beach Cities programs for volunteers or conversation companions who provide older and/or disabled adults with socialization. Isolation is a leading cause of depression in those groups. For more information on that service or becoming a volunteer, please go to bchd.org. Thank you all for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mary, for your service. Those of you who don't realize it, Beach Cities Health District, Manhattan Beach, is one of the founding cities. So we have a lot of services there that many of you aren't aware of. But thank you, Mary, for putting that out to us. Appreciate that. Our next speaker? No one else here wants to speak? Don't fight over it. We have room. Come on down. Okay.
Mike McCowsky, 32-year.
Mike McCowsky, 32-year president. So the city council has now voted twice not to allow outside organizations to approve permits for special events at Bruce's Beach Park, as well as the Two Parquetts. That was the right decision back in 2018, when four of you, David, Amy, Steve, and Richard, I believe, originally voted for the ban on special events at Bruce's Beach Park in a unanimous 5-0 vote. And it was the right decision last year when council voted 4-1 to continue the ban, including Steve, Richard, and Joe. That means that everyone on this council has voted at least once against allowing permits for special events at Bruce's Beach Park, and Steve and Richard have voted for it twice. Or to put it another way, council has previously recognized the overwhelming public support for the ban on special events, with a total vote over those two separate council sessions of nine to one against allowing outside organization to hold those types of events at Bruce's Beach Park. Now, we all know the issues that large events at the park pose for city services and the close by surrounding neighborhood. Those same issues of traffic, parking, noise, trash, et cetera, that apply for permanent events also pertain to city-sponsored events, which is what we're discussing today, right? My point is that it doesn't matter who is sponsoring an event, a private party or the city. The issues are the same, which is why Bruce's Beach Park was an inappropriate venue for special events in 2018 and 2022, and is still an inappropriate venue for a city-sponsored Juneteenth event today. I draw a distinction, by the way, between a Juneteenth-type celebration and an event like the plaque dedication ceremony, which I attended. There's light-years worth of difference between those two events, both quantitatively, in terms of the expected number of participants, and qualitatively, the plaque dedication being a much more reserved, reflective, and thoughtful event, not a celebration, per se. That makes a huge difference in terms of how those two separate and distinct events play out, and the potential impact on city services, traffic, parking, and the surrounding neighborhood. If certain groups are now asking the city for permission to hold a Juneteenth celebration on public property, fine. They can go through the permit process like everyone else and hold the event at one of several venues that have much more accommodating for a large celebration, particularly one with amplified music and performances and the necessary parking. Polywalk Park and Civic Center Plaza are two of those venues that immediately come to mind. Finally, I am adamantly opposed to the city paying for this event. If you want to celebrate Juneteenth on public property, I say have at it. Apply and pay your permit fees. The city will even work with you to accommodate your event at an appropriate venue, but do it on your own time and your own dime, and don't expect Manhattan Beach's residents to pay for the whole thing out of the city's general fund. I'd like to see a city-sponsored event in honor of Law Enforcement Appreciation Month, which is the upcoming month of May. Will the city honor my request and sponsor such events next month at Bruce's Beach Park? I'm not holding my breath. And as a final comment, I want to second the previous speaker's comments about the police decal. I think it diminishes the gravitas of the vehicle and the vehicles I can... And I think we can do better on the decal. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Our next speaker?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Adam Goldston, a 30-something-year resident of Manhattan Beach. Echoing the previous speaker, I'm actually excited. The five of you are unanimous across two separate votes regarding no events at Bruce's Beach, 18th Street, and Larson's. Sound public policy, thank you. We're now considering a loophole. Fair enough. My question is, what is the process and protocol for considering an event application? Is there even an event application itself? What is the criteria on it? Is that event application also consider the other public venues in the city? Your answer may very well be, there's an application, and the process and protocol is that you're our elected officials, you make the decisions. Again, yes, fair enough, you were elected. But where's the transparency in selecting who gets approved, what, where, when, and Where is the input from the community? And again, there's lots of constituencies within our community. Where's the input from the police department, the fire department? We've just gone through an interesting process with our outdoor dining, a very fair process, something that's going to affect people's day-to-day lives, that was nothing but transparent and fair and input. Maybe we should consider something like that. The worst outcome here is that events come up before council, and council as a whole, and each of you as members, vote yes for event A, yes for event B, but no for event C, and no for event D. That will open up accusations of bias, how can it not? Not helpful in a community that a lot of those accusations go flying around. Finally, I'd suggest you look at Shirtlift versus Boston, a Supreme Court decision fairly recently. And my fear is, once you open this loophole, you're not only going to not be able to close it, but also you won't be able to control it. It's about private versus government speech, and what it basically says, if one has a right to do something, everybody has a right to do something. And I am convinced that every single person in this community can list at least one event that they would not like to see. Thank you for your service, and thank you for your thoughtfulness towards this and all of our other issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam.
And I brought pictures. Good evening, Mayor Montgomery and City Council. My name is Amalia Samaristi. I'm a 15-year resident of Manhattan Beach. I'm here tonight to ask our city council to put the residents of this city first. This is regarding the proposed city-funded event at the park located east of the Bruce's Beach land. I strongly oppose this and ask you, as our leaders, not to do this. My husband and I live at 27th and the Strand. For over 15 years, we have enjoyed the peace and tranquility of our home and neighborhood. We love this town, we love our neighbors, and I love living on the Strand. However, the last two years, we have watched our tranquil neighborhood drastically change. My husband and I have been forced to call the Manhattan Beach Police Department close to 45 times in the last two years. As many of you know, I have emailed city council asking for your help. Here are some of the issues we deal with and that I can prove. Parking in front of our home, getting out of their cars to urinate, as well as in front of our home, it happens every week, and we are forced to clean up the filthy tissues and feces. Homeless people parking in front of our home camping out. Drunk individuals regularly parking in front of our home in the middle of the night, screaming, throwing bottles, blaring loud music. On multiple occasions, we have witnessed couples parking in front of our home, having an evening of passion in their cars, and discarding used condoms in front of our home. Unbearable non-stop pot-smoking entering our home. Loud blaring music on beach, complete with giant speakers. Cars driving on the strand. We have been forced to fully gate our patio because we've had multiple individuals using our patio on our property to drink, smoke, and peer into our windows. One woman was caught on our security cameras taking pictures of the inside of our home. I can go on and on. So, Mr. Mo? No. We, as residents of this area, do not need any more attention, events, or spotlights in our neighborhood. The park is too small for large events. We have gone through hell during all the unlawful events, the traffic, the left garbage, the public urinations on residents' properties. Enough is enough. Please do the right thing, listen to the residents of this city. I strongly oppose a city-funded event in the small park surrounded by homes. We deal with enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Maya.
And here you go.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Our next speaker?
Good evening. My name is Steve Kahn, and I am, to him, a passionate no on the public, yeah, the city-sponsored event at Bruce's Beach. My friend Mike said everything I needed to say in much more eloquent terms. You can't have two standards, one for the public and one for the city. There's too much of a negative impact, and there's alternative locations for a large event like Lakeville Park. Also, I agree with him with regards to the logo for the Manhattan Beach vehicle, police vehicles. I saw them and thought, my God, what happened here? So as opposed to spending more city money on a consultant, we have a lot of very creative people in this town. Let's have some public engagement and have a program to have public submit logos for the police vehicles. It's a great way to get the city involved and save the city some money. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Our next speaker?
Good evening, members of the council, and Mr. Mayor. My name is John Freeman. I'm a 34-year resident.
New guy, okay.
Yeah, been around for a while. Didn't use to have the gray hair. I, like the last four speakers, strongly opposed to the proposed changes in the existing policy originally established in 2018 and affirmed by this council just last year. As a homeowner who lives within one block of Bruce's Beach, I can see certainly why the original ordinance was established, and can only think there is a special constituency driving this flip-flop in existing policy. An arbitrary and capricious change that does not support the needs nor wishes of those affected the most, those who live nearby a small enclosed park. There are certainly more appropriate venues than Bruce's Beach that are not high residential density, with limited access streetwise, and no dedicated parking, and at risk for excessive noise. This type of flip-flop fails to meet expectations that have been well-established for the last five years. When expectations are not met, trust is lost in those who fail to maintain the well-thought-out existing policies. I implore the council to maintain the trust of the citizens of the affected area by maintaining the policy that is currently on record. You guys do a good job, most of the time. Now is not the time to drop the ball. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Hi, my name is Ray Joseph. I am also opposed to large events. Over at the Bruce's Beach is too small for that. I worked Hometown Fair for eight years and understood what it took to do large events. And there just is not the infrastructure there. And also with the, you know, there's level, and there's huge drop-offs, and if it gets, you know, people can get, it's not a good park for large events over there. There isn't the infrastructure, we have a lot of north-south traffic there, and also for the homeowners there. It has a big impact on, you know, their lifestyles, what they experience there. I sold a property shortly after the whole Bruce's Beach thing, and I represented the buyer, and the previous escrow was $700,000 higher before all the controversy and the huge things going on over there. So the poor sellers lost on a family trust sale, an enormous amount of money, on what it just, on how much it hit the property values over there. So I think we need to look at, it's a residential neighborhood, keep at that. You know, there's other parks and other venues that are better for large events. And that's, that's what I think, and I think we should keep it that way. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you, Ray.
Now, as much fun as earlier with all the kids, but...
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, it's nice to see all of your smiling faces again. I'm here to speak about three items, but before I get started, I'm just going to voice my support for your previous five speakers regarding the activity that you're going to be considering tonight. My first item is tied into an article that I read in one of our local newspapers. It was under the litigation section, and I usually don't bother with it. But I wanted to come to you tonight and just, and basically ask you a couple questions regarding it. Some of you were quoted in the article, so I'm assuming it's a fairly active reflection of at least your comments that were made from that perspective. My question, and just really I'm asking, how much money have we spent legally or on any type of activity related to this particular issue? I know it went back to 2015. Some of you were on the, on the committee or the council at that time when it went through, some were not. I know it came up again for another vote on 2019, of which a strict fine was indicated in addition to going to stricter criteria. So I'm just interested in knowing how much money we have invested in this, in this activity? And how much money did we generate revenue-wise because of the fines? I have no idea. And I think the, the city should hear that information as compared to reading about it here.
Can we clarify what the...
Short-term rentals is the subject?
Yeah, short-time rentals, I'm sorry. That's the only one I got bothered about.
I was following along the article.
Yeah, it was a long article. My second topic is on an issue that occurred about 10 months ago, and I know I'm getting older every year. It could have been six months ago or 12 months ago, I don't know. And it was in regards to the discussions that took place between the city council and the fire department at the last going-through. I know that two of you were not on the council, by the way, welcome back. And also, I want to know the outcomes. You guys implemented some changes. I believe they were geared to cost containment, being able to manage the fire department as compared to the fire guys managing it from that perspective. Did we achieve our goals? Were we successful? Did we cut expenses? Do we have a full complement of firefighters at this particular time? Last item is on, I had the pleasure of going down to...
You give 15 seconds, we'll cut you off.
Oh, good, I'll go speak fast. I went down and had donuts with our assemblyman in Hermosa Beach last week. One topic came up in regards to, I think they said a proposed legislation that's going to be impacting property owners, where they would be not allowed to pass through their tax rate to their children. They were going to start to tax that from that perspective. I see on your agenda that you're talking about whether you're going to take official positions on these type of bills that are coming up. I would urge you to support the no on that, to keep the tax base where it is for everybody. Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome. Email me, we'll get the answers to questions. Those that we can get for you, we'll email you. Steve, email me, email me, and we'll get the answers that we can. Perfect. Have your wife email me. Our next speaker? Anyone else here want to speak? You get two bites of the apple for you.
I didn't know. Hi, Krista Skinner, 33-year resident in Manhattan Beach, and as you know, Regional Commissioner for AYSO-18. I may have misheard at the beginning when you were having mic issues, whether item seven was being pulled from the consent calendar tonight. You can either yes or no.
Yeah, it was.
Okay. I will speak in support of allowing it to go through, whether you'll consider that tonight or another point in time. As you know, Marine Avenue Park turf was put in place 10 years ago. I actually met with Mayor Pro Tem Franklin probably in October to review the field. The field is in desperate need of being replaced. The item on consent tonight was to put it out for bid, not to make a decision who's paying for it, how it's being funded, to put it out for bid. So delaying this from the consent calendar to even get an accurate number for what it's going to cost to replace this field, I think we need to move forward with that to get the number. We don't know what we're talking about yet. It's been two years since I've been able to put 16, 19-year-old players on that field because it's dangerous. We haven't had beg field for three years. Those were five teams tonight. I have 300 teams that are all of your constituents' children, that it's my responsibility to have a place for them to safely play, and you're taking that away from us because we can't get past the step to even figure out how much it's going to cost. It's irresponsible for the city to not at least move forward to replace this field. We were the major funder of the field 10 years ago. We were the major funder of Village Field when that was put in. We are ready to move forward to this. However you want us to help pay for it as a user group, the other user groups are on board, but to not take the step forward to even figure out what we're doing, again, is irresponsible. So I ask that you reconsider at least putting it out to bid, and then we can have all the conversations later with Parks and Rec and the other user groups on how to fund it. But we need to start moving forward. This has been since November, since it's been in consideration, six months later. We can't have another beg. You won't have these teams here to celebrate if you take these fields away from us, and we're going to stop using Marine Avenue Park. It is dangerous. I've been told not to say that word, but I will show you the pictures of the blood on the knees, and the elbows, and the chins, and the broken legs and arms that have happened at this field, and we need to make it better. The city deserves... The city deserves better, our children deserve better, and we're looking to you to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Stick around for the fun. Our next speaker? No one here in person? Zoom, please, Martha? No Zoom speakers. We're gonna close public comment. And I mean a motion, Item 8, Consent Calendar Approval, Items 2 through 8. A motion by Councilmember Lesser.
Motion to approve with the exception of Items 7 and 8.
Correct.
It was 2 through 9, though.
2 through 9.
I'm sorry, 2 through 9.
Yeah, with it, right.
Thank you, City Attorney Current, for catching me on that one.
And Mr. Mayor, if I might.
Yes.
Letting Ms. Skinner know that we're not, not approving Item 7, we're just pulling it for discussion. So it's just, it's sort of a technical thing, but.
The process.
That was perfect, it was very helpful.
Stick around. A motion and a second by Councilmember Haworth. Any comments? Roll call, please.
All right.
Sorry, now that we're back to hearing.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right. And now items pulled from consent, the Starbait Number 7, Consideration of Authorization to Solicit Bids for a Placement Turf for the Marine Avenue Athletic Field, pulled by Councilmember Napolitano.
Thank you, Your Honor. And it's entirely responsible to pull this item tonight for discussion because, while I'm all in favor of going out for bid on it, I want to take this opportunity to talk about the fact that we need to start those negotiations and discussions right away as to who's going to pay for it at the end of it. We can get the number, but as to who's gonna pay, let's start that now. We've gone down the road before on too many other things, someone brought up outdoor dining, where we wait and wait and wait, and nothing gets done because we start negotiations three months after we get the bid. We can start those now while we go out to bid. We can start discussing what the percentages, amounts are, anything like, that's my suggestion. I pulled it because one of our former commissioners, Bruce Greenberg, reached out and made some suggestions. I'm not saying I agree with the suggestions, or I don't agree with the suggestions, but I agree that we need to start looking at it right away, right now, as we go out to bid, not after we go out to bid. That is a waste of time.
So comments or questions from, for Director Lehman before he talks? Seeing none. Director Lehman?
Yes. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. So, yes, Councilmember Napolitano, you are correct, and that has been an ongoing discussion as with the other models where we have, it's been collaborative with all of the user groups. And, you know, what that allocation would be, what the monetary contribution would be. And in addition, you know, to that, these user groups are contributing, you know, either hourly, you know, based on the agreement, or the $25 a head for use of all of the fields. So there are a lot of moving pieces. Again, this would just kick-start the process, and we would bring back all of those costs and those contribution agreements. Again, this has been a multi-month, you know, probably multi-year discussion with, with all of the groups to come up with, with that number. Again, that's what we'll be bringing back with, with the costs.
So if I could, as a follow-up question, do we have a deadline for ourselves? Do we set a deadline as to when these negotiations are going to at least pause while we have some sort of concept as to how it's gonna be worked out?
So there's a, you know, a model that has been created with the user groups currently. The, hopefully, if we're able to push this out to bid as early as next week, we could bring it back to the first meeting in July, you know, with those updated agreements. If there's specific direction from council that you would like us to include in that model.
I'd like you to consider Bruce Greenberg's comments and any other comments that provide as an example of things to do.
Absolutely, yes. I know we've had multiple discussions with Mr. Greenberg, and I know with the city manager as well with possibly creating an enterprise fund and various ways to, to fund these capital projects as they come to us.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Haworth?
Yeah, and I would add that it might be smart to bifurcate the two issues and talk about first, kind of the funding model, rather than, it's not a negotiation between AYSO pays X and we pay Y. I think it would be really wise because, you know, maybe we do it completely different than we've done before, but I think that, that is its own discussion. So I would like to add that, because it's not about sort of, you know, the number. It sounds like it is, but it's not. You know, it's about how do we do this in a more sensible manner? We shouldn't always be in this position like, okay, we're going out to try to find, you know, can AYSO do this? Let's see if we, you know, we should be able to figure out how to do this going forward. So I would like to see that as a separate thing. Does that make, does that make sense to my colleagues?
We're just, we're just taking questions and comments. Now we're gonna leave a comment.
Yeah, that's right. That's right, whatever he said.
Questions?
Just a question having to do with when the last time the fee schedule was looked at, which is a difficult subject, particularly as someone like myself who used to coach and use that field. But my recollection from my past council services, that was on its own separate cycle for what the teams would pay to use the fields and to help pay for the cost, the capital improvements over time.
Correct, so that was?
December 2018.
Thank you. December 2018.
And when was the thought as to when that might come back?
With additional, you know, reevaluating what those rates might be.
Correct.
Okay. We'd like to, again, we'll reconsider that, and I think it is clear, I mean, that's clear direction. We will come back with what would be another funding mechanism other than moving forward with this model. You know, what is another way to grow that capital to where we don't have to keep coming back to those user groups and asking for funding?
Thank you.
Mayor Tim Franklin?
Yes, hi. Thank you, Parks and Rec Director Lehman. When was the last time that we did fund a turf replacement? Was it Village?
Yes. Village, correct.
Okay, and was that like about 10 years ago?
2012.
No.
18.
Four?
18.
18. 2018.
18 or 19. 2018, okay. Great. So do you see things that have fundamentally occurred within these kind of models that we can't pursue that, and that we have to do something new, given, you know, what we've been through and the cost escalation and everything like that?
I think, again, it's something that we've looked at, looking at creating an enterprise. I think that is a very good viable option. And at the same time, I think these models have worked. These are the community-based user groups that would have priority regardless, and they have the capital to assist with, you know, creating this public-private partnership. And so if it was 100% funded by the city, they would still have priority on the field because they are our community-based resident groups that have the lion's share of the use of these fields.
Okay, so what was the scope of the funding for Village Field?
The overall financials, I know it was over $500,000 contribution. I can get you, I don't have that off the top of my head, the exact number.
But the total cost of the?
I believe it was $1,500 for, for the re-turf. Archie Sherman will have that detailed information for you.
Which should come back, would be my suggestion.
Let him get through, we'll do public comment next.
Shouting from the crowd there. So that project included two different, we replaced all the fencing and the synthetic turf replacing as well. And I think the overall, the turf, I want to say, was $475,000 for the replacement. I think the fencing was another $500,000.
Okay, so.
Let's see what's up, Spencer.
Can I answer your questions?
Yeah, and are there other, I mean, can you just sort of give an idea of a funding model, I mean, that we might look at today?
We address everything early and set up, you know, probably five years in advance and just pre-plan for that, I think.
Okay, so it's basically establishing a fee, a user fee for each of the teams, and then they go ahead and they absorb that cost and take it within their organizations to raise that money, sounds like.
We have a few different options that we've been discussing, but it's, whether it's the enterprise fund or, you know, other revenue streams, where it's just planning for the future, like.
Okay, all right, thank you.
No other questions?
No.
Public comment. Those of you who have not spoken on this item, please come speak on this item now. Anyone? On Zoom, any callers? Close public comment, council. Your choice. I'm sorry, Councilmember Haworth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So it sounds like, at least from my perspective, I mean, I'm ready to approve this tonight to go out to bid. I mean, we have to do that. But I also do want staff to consider, you know, I don't know if School Board Member Greenberg's suggestions are good ones or not, but I do know that there, the concern is, is valid. And so I want us to look separately. There's the bid, there's the, you know, the fee schedule and how we're gonna pay for it, and the funding mechanism. Those are, those are separate things. I don't want to see them smushed together, right? Because, and I think we can work on the one before we get the bid, so that then AYSO and Lacrosse and all the other groups, I mean, that's the point, that there's other groups, right? So that they all have a chance to weigh in. So, but I will support going out to bid.
Is that a motion?
I did, I made a motion to approve.
I'll second your motion, and I'll thank Councilmember Napolitano for pulling this item to address these issues of funding. As someone who raised soccer players in my family, and I was mayor in 2013 when we dedicated that field, and it was known then that there was a useful life of only so long, and I regret that it's taken this long to get to this point, but obviously there's been a lot of issues in between, but we do need to talk about the funding model and whether there's an alternative way to move forward than what we're currently doing. So I support.
It might not be, but I just want, yeah, right.
Thank you, Councilmember Lesser. Hold on, do you want to make any comments? You're good. Mayor Tim Franklin, are you good?
Uh, yeah, so do we have to modify this?
No.
Motion? Because this is just asking for the replacement of the turf and?
It's just additional direction with staff, I believe.
Okay, to get the negotiations started for that, okay.
Mr. Mayor, let me just clarify, does staff need any further direction? We do not, we understand.
Anyone else have any comments?
Yeah, it's just, it's, the motion is to approve consideration of authorization solicit bids. It's just like it says.
So you're good?
Yep.
All right, then, roll call, please. I'm sorry. Voting screen. I'm stuck on that reverberation.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next item up that was pulled from consent, it's a long name, so bear with me, Consideration of Resolution to Awarding a Construction Agreement to Hardy and Harper for Cycle 2's Tribute Servicing Project. I'll stop there and ask Director Lee to come back and give us the Reader's Digest condensed version of the project, then open up public comment. Not yet. Director Lee will go first.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. My name's Eric Lee, your Public Works Director. Tonight, Associate Engineer Gilbert Ramos will give you a brief overview of the project and will be available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Principal Civil Engineer Gil Gamboa.
All right, we get the principal engineer, that's good.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. So this is part of our annual street resurfacing project, entails four street segments in the north of Valley Drive, east of Blanch Avenue and to Pacific Avenue in the tree section. They include Flurnoy Road, Agnes Road, 27th Street, and 29th Street. They're all funded out of our, three of our, our street resurfacing project fundings, Prop C, Gas Tax, and Measure M. The project entails a full reconstruction of the streets, some curb, curb gutter sidewalk treatments, bulbouts in some of the areas. This is an area where it's a non-traditional, non-standard streets, there's not full sidewalks and everything there, but there is some, some places where we are doing some concrete flatwork. But the main, main crux of it is replacing the low PCI or pavement condition index is how we base our, our priority in terms of street resurfacing. So these range, out of a scale of 100, these range in between 30 and 50 in terms of our index, so they are in need of repair and actually full reconstruction at this time. The total length of the project will probably take about four to six months after we get all the pre-construction and ordering of materials and then get the contractor going. So that's kind of a summary of the project scope. And then if you have any additional questions, we have staff here to answer anything else.
Great. Councilmember Napolitano go first, and I'll follow right behind you.
Thank you, Your Honor. So question, Gilbert, to boil it down, we're taking the soft shoulder, right, that's there now and putting in curbs and sidewalks?
Correct, not, not for entire street segments, just to handle some of the drainage flows. So we're gonna put in rolled curbs which help transition the soft shoulder in different, you know, the varying elevations and stuff.
So it's not gonna be a typical curb and gutter, it's gonna be the rolling?
Right, the roll curbs that we see, you know, on Oak, Elm, that we did years ago in that sense, which helped transition the non-standard streets with parking pads and such.
So there's not gonna be any of the typical curb and gutter that you see, for instance, down here, downtown?
In, maybe in some, some short areas, but not for full-length spans, I don't think.
Okay. Because, well, I mean, we would only do that if there's a condition that needs it for drainage, but how big are those areas?
They vary, they just get, they typically get us from a high point down to the catch basin drainage areas, so wherever those places are located.
And we're talking about putting in sidewalks where there aren't any sidewalks now?
We have a few areas there that we are doing that, that is a result of our past mobility plan.
Which is?
Which has kind of, at Flurnoy and the corner of Flurnoy and Valley Drive.
Okay. All right, that's it for now.
Thank you. Now, Mike, I'm gonna have to count the questions. So do me a favor, can you put the map up that you have on the report, please? So we can all see what we're talking about here. And while that's ongoing, I don't know who's gonna do that. Gilbert, that's ongoing, I'm gonna ask you another question while they do in the map. The property on Flurnoy next to Valley, that is public right-of-way on that southernmost border on the Flurnoy side?
Yes, there's public right-of-way, that street, the Flurnoy is as a public right-of-way of 40 feet, so from one center line to the, to the, to the, you know, either side it'll be 20 feet, so.
Where the sidewalk is proposed to go on the Flurnoy side, north of Valley, that right-of-way exists where the sidewalk's proposed?
Correct. That is public right-of-way, there's no, that's, there's no property acquisition if you're on that end of it, so that's all in the public right-of-way.
Okay, and were there resident requests to place the sidewalk, to have a sidewalk there? The reason for the sidewalk is what?
The reason for?
Director Lee?
Traffic Engineer Eric Zanfleet will be able to answer that question.
There we go.
Oh, wait, which one?
Bring the big guns in, I get it. Traffic Engineer Lee, thank you, sir, your comments about that.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Eric Zanfleet, City Traffic Engineer. With regard to the sidewalk proposed on Flurnoy Road, it would be going from Valley Drive north to 25th Street. It's about 400 feet long. It would be within the city's right-of-way. It would encroach about three feet more than the existing pavement is now. So three feet of that, that parkway would be sidewalk. We do have an alternative design that could be used so that we would not encroach into the parkway area that's there now. The reason for the sidewalk is, as Gilbert mentioned, we look at our city's mobility plan, which emphasizes and encourages pedestrian safety and bicycle safety, and this is one of those areas where we are trying to connect the Veterans Parkway to our neighborhood. We have a proposed bulbout design which would calm traffic on Valley Drive, which is also a concern, and provide space for curb ramps so that we can build a crosswalk across Valley Drive at Flurnoy. The sidewalk would then connect the pedestrians to the rest of the neighborhood. We have suggested school routes that are on Marine and, and 25th Streets to get to Grandview School and to America Martyr School. So those two destinations are what we are trying to connect together and provide a safe way for our pedestrians to go through. Similarly, you can see the section of Flurnoy Road south, south of Ardmore Avenue. We also have a bulbout that's proposed there, and all of it together would help connect the south and north side. would help connect the south and north sides of the parkway with a pedestrian route.
Got it. One more follow-up question. The alternate design you mentioned, I don't see a picture of it here, but could you just give us an overview what that alternate design would be in case of the sidewalk that you proposed originally? What would that look like?
Sure. If you can imagine, the proposed street width for the, for the vehicles is twenty-four feet. It would have rolled curbs on one side and a curb on the other to, to protect the sidewalk. The sidewalk would be five feet wide. Three feet of that sidewalk would be in the dirt area of the existing street. The proposal or the alternate design we could look into is moving the sidewalk into the street area that's there now by three feet. Two feet would be reduced, two feet of the roadway would be reduced to make it a twenty-two-foot wide street, and one foot of the sidewalk would be reduced from a five-foot wide sidewalk to a four-foot wide sidewalk. Then we wouldn't encroach in any of the landscaping along that side of the street.
You call that Plan B?
That's Plan B. Either one of those designs does require us to remove parking on one side of the street. Parking on one side of the street still only allows one travel lane for both directions. It, twenty-four-foot street or twenty-two-foot street, still, if you use eight feet of it for parking on one side, you only have one lane. It's existing now with parking on both sides of the street, and it only allows about a twelve-foot lane in the middle for both directions.
Not unusual. Thank you very much. Any other, Council has any questions? Reverend Tim Franklin?
Yes. So you mentioned that you wanted to make a safe, what's the term, safe path school?
Yeah, safe pedestrian path.
Okay. So you'd be, so where you're heading south on Flurnoy, and you get to the Veterans Parkway. I drove by there, but I wasn't looking at that, what you said there'd be a potential future crosswalk there.
Correct.
To help those students. Is that, in certain parts of the Greenbelt, there's a, there's a pretty tall bank. Is that, got a pretty steep bank there?
Yes. At that point, there's a staircase made by wooden railroad ties that go up, that goes up to the Veterans Parkway.
So that, that staircase is there now, right?
That's there now.
Yeah, because I know we have a couple of those. Okay. But wouldn't that be kind of difficult for students going to school with the bike in particular?
With the bike, you'd have to carry your bike up the stairs as they would now.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
Uh, no, I just wanted to clarify that.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. Stand by for any more questions. This time, we'll take public comment.
Hello, Mayor, City Council people. So, Richard Harriet Chase. So we live at 2151 North Valley Drive, and we've been residents there for thirty-four years. And we are no to sidewalk and loss of parking on one side of Flurnoy Road. Our house, we were not aware of two previous public meetings about the project, one during COVID-19 on Zoom, April twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, and one in person in Zoom on September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two. And it seems our neighbors weren't either of those that we've talked to. We just found out about the project two weeks ago by accident. The front of our house faces Flurnoy, and it is rebuilt, it was rebuilt in nineteen eighty-five. And it is the, excuse me, the only house on the block facing Flurnoy. And the project calls for installing a sidewalk near the front of our house that would impact us negatively in so many ways. Number one, eliminate our privacy by having people walk too close to the front of our house with three feet of the four bricks, within three feet of four brick steps that lead to our front door, and six feet from our kitchen, living room, and dining room windows. And two, removing parking from our side of the street. And this will impact our parking and overload parking to the other side of the street. Many neighbors on Valley park on Flurnoy, and cars could possibly park on the sidewalk since the curbs will be rolled, bringing them closer to the front of the house. And number three, removing three feet of our...
Harry, you want to let your husband talk for a second there?
Yes. Last time. Number three, removing the three feet of our brick driveway, which is not very long, possibly long enough, possibly not long enough then for a large SUV. To, fine to make the corners of Valley and Flurnoy ADA approved as the plans. No problem there. But the, the, this, this comes, it's really impactful on us. It changes everything. I think we're the only ones in the whole, whole neighborhood who have the, our house facing on Flurnoy, and as a result, a sidewalk...
There's another house up the next block.
Yeah, but that's, that a different side to that, but...
But not on our block.
Yeah. But anyway, this, this totally affects our quality of life. It's, it will just ruin our privacy. People walk in the doors. There haven't been any accidents, as far as we know, on, on Flurnoy. Kids get across the street.
Not many kids. It's low-traffic walking. Not many people walk there. And on the cross streets of Marine and 25th Street, it's only going up two blocks. Those cross streets do not have any sidewalks on them.
Yeah. So that's, that's, we, we think it's, as longtime residents, you know, we've, we made sure that, that, you know, our, 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 our walking area is clean and fine, but you can't have a sidewalk there. And this would be a real problem for us. It would really hurt our quality of life.
Seven people that we just talked to within a couple of hours signed the petition not to have it. And I'm sure we can get twenty, thirty more.
That's right, yeah.
Because the street is used for parking on, on trash days from Valley and Valley Drive.
Yeah. The parking situation is really dire, and that's, people can, can negotiate the street and, with parking on both sides, but you take that away, it's, it's all bad for us, and I don't think it does anything good for the neighborhood.
No continuation of sidewalks anywhere, anywhere in the area, just to put in this two-block piece. So it doesn't make sense for us.
So, so in conclusion, thank you for your time. It's, we think it's, it's a real impactful factor for us, or we wouldn't be up here concerned with. This is the biggest issue facing us in thirty-five years. Thank you very much.
Thank you both. Any other public speakers on this item? Zoom? Anyone on Zoom? We do have someone on Zoom?
There's no reception.
No one on Zoom. All right. We'll close public comment. Council questions, Councilmember Lesser?
Just a question, and I'm not sure if it's for our Public Works Director or for our Traffic Engineer. I want to better understand the, the dual nature of a rolled sidewalk. If it will really serve as an opportunity for pedestrian traffic, or if it's rolled, does that imply that cars will park there, in which case it would block the sidewalk? I'm trying to better understand what its purpose is, if to the extent it's being installed to facilitate mobility.
So a rolled curb can be used next to a sidewalk. It's often used in other, in other cities. The, the rolled curb prevents the water from flushing out into the neighbor's yard, as far as that goes. The, the sidewalk area is not part of the rolled curb area.
So the sidewalk be in addition to the rolled curb. This is just the edging we're talking about.
Correct.
Thank you. Let's help.
Anyone else? Reverend Tim Franklin?
Yes. Eric, I'm sorry. If you could. So, so the rolled sidewalk, we have called that a swale in the past? Like when you mentioned oak and pine and elm?
Uh, yes. Part of, part of the rolled curb is a swale. The swale is the, the concave section where the water goes.
Right. Okay. So, so there is a potential option to narrow the sidewalk to allow the swale, and then as it curves up, then the sidewalk connects to it, right?
Yes.
Okay. Has there been a problem with runoff at that corner at all that we can see?
That's an engineering question. I, I don't know which way the water flows in that, in that particular area.
It flows great.
It flows great. All I'll say is that is that the existing parkway that's next to the roadway ha, is generally, has rocks, a rock, um, planter alongside it, and, and several large trees.
Yeah.
There's a storm during farther down.
Right.
Uh, there's also another point that, that if the sidewalk and, and, and rolled curb were built in the area of the existing roadway, we would not have to remove...
Two trees?
Two trees. For, for that.
Hmm. Okay. All right, no more questions. Thank you.
Anyone else? Eric, I'm sorry. Couple more questions for you. I circled two items when you were speaking earlier. Tell me about parking loss. You're saying that no matter which way we go, Plan A or Plan B, that we parking loss in that one block area, both the north, I'm sorry, the west side and the east side. Is that correct?
Correct. So the, the west side of the street has about seven parking spaces.
Okay. And the ADA issue for to put a sidewalk in regardless, is that an ADA issue to have that there, to have that access being ADA sidewalk? Is that just part of the equation or nothing to do with the sidewalk being installed there? That's merely an access point for people to, or children to walk on the sidewalk versus walking in the middle of the street?
When you're walking in the street, it's not an ADA path.
So you want the sidewalk to protection?
Correct. We'd like to have the added safety of not having to walk in the street.
And the last one, were you aware of any resident requests to have this installed? In other words, any people were concerned about their kids walking in the street and asked for a sidewalk to be installed?
Yeah. Several years ago, I don't remember how many years, we had a petition that came through from students that went to American Martyrs School. And that's what initiated some of the work that was on Ardmore and Flurnoy. It also initiated crossing guards request, and, and then, and then the request for pedestrian signs at Valley Drive and Flurnoy. Now there's pedestrian signs, even though there's not a crosswalk, we are letting drivers know that there may be the potential for someone to cross there and to, and to watch out. Also, from Grand View Elementary School, we've worked with them for many years to provide, or to, to encourage pedestrian, safe pedestrian routes to school. Even though Flurnoy isn't on the direct path to Grand View School, the crossing at Marine Avenue and Flurnoy was an issue that came up to the City Council several years ago, asking for a stop sign there. And so even though we didn't approve the stop sign there, we did approve a crosswalk. And so that crosswalk essentially doesn't go to any particular sidewalk. But as part of this project, we would actually create the sidewalk that connects that particular crosswalk as well.
Understood. Thank you. My last question will be for Director Lee. Counsel, I heard a comment earlier, and I don't know what the answer is. This is the third time we discussed this in, at meetings, whether it be at planning or whatever was you done. The third time we talked about this project?
Yeah. This is the first time that this specific project is being brought to the City Council as part of the street resurfacing. I think Traffic Engineer Zanfleet has had previous public meetings with the PPIC, and potentially, a couple of years ago, summaries of that were considered by the Council here.
Or the items that I talked about.
Yes.
So I think that's, that's the extent of those meetings.
Great. And noticing, what was our range of notice for this project? Was it a thousand feet? We know?
Five hundred feet.
Five hundred feet. All right. That's it for me. Reverend Tim Franklin has one.
Yeah, yeah. So one more question. Is not having a sidewalk there, is that going to impact the viability of any of those grants or anything like that?
Uh, no. The, the grants are not tied to the sidewalk.
Okay. Thank you.
And one last one. Timing-wise, are we in danger of losing any of the grants that we have if we don't give an answer back or start this bid by a certain date?
Um, yeah. I don't know the exact date, but we, we do have grant funds that we're planning to use, and we would recommend that the Council award the construction contract as recommended, so that we can get the contracting process started and not lose further, further ground on this. If the Council recalls, we actually rejected bids on this a couple months ago. And so this is the rebidding of that. And so we're not as far along as we would have liked to been up to this point.
No further questions? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Close comments, Counsel. Who wants to start us off here? Counsel Lesser, look at your face. You want to start us off? Be my guest. Councilmember Lesser?
I see Councilmember Franklin.
Okay. Push the button. I follow directions.
And then I'm happy to follow.
All right. Reverend Tim Franklin?
So, it was interesting, maybe twenty-five years ago, the city was putting in the swales in, on our section of Pine Avenue between Nineteenth and Marine, and, and all those streets there, Oak and Elm, and then, actually, from Marine all the way up to, let's just say Seventeenth. But anyway. And we were given the option to opt out. And, because we just didn't like the look of it. We, we just thought it was some derogatory comments as it looked like it was Irvine, you know?
God forbid.
And, and the like. So, so we've been living without the swale for that many years. Other people have been living with it. I have seen where people will go up the swale and go up, well, having a sidewalk would have been the responsibility of the homeowner. But anyway, people are doing that. They're covering the swale with about half their car. So I think that's what's going to happen here with a street that's used to having parking. You know, as we know, we want to add parking, not take away parking, keep the parking that we have. So I think that's, that would happen in all reality in that area. As far as the, I asked a question about the drainage. It doesn't seem to be an issue. I also just sort of gave thought that if you're going to be crossing to, you know, the Greenbelt to the south, you know, or, or coming from the south to go north, if, if you're on the south side, you're in Pacific Elementary School area. So I don't know how many kids are actually going to be coming across the Greenbelt from the south, heading north, going down, lifting their bike down those stairs in order to, in order to ride their bikes to Grand View. I imagine we haven't done a study. So I kind of favor the status quo, leave it as it is. And, you know, it doesn't seem to create much of a hazard. And I think going through all, putting in all that hardscape, it's just going to be overtaken by vehicles anyway.
Let me clarify your answer. Are you asking about keep the status quo for the Flurnoy section that we're talking about? The rest of it, you're fine with?
Well, for the Flurnoy section, for this, for this sidewalk, yeah. Flurnoy and Valley, up to 25th, is it?
I can't see the map any longer, but...
Yeah, up to, up to 25th.
Councilmember Lesser?
Well, first and foremost, this is a much larger project than just this intersection, and I'm very much in favor of moving forward with it, so we do not lose out on large grants that are important. I'm very sympathetic to the homeowners. On the other hand, I'm thinking over the years, the many other projects that relate to what we're talking about with this one intersection. One is mobility. All of us have worked on mobility issues to facilitate connectivity in our, in our city. We've adopted multiple plans. This is part of a key link to calming Valley at that location. We've just recently heard from neighbors pleading with us to take measures to try and slow traffic. And as part of the project that's proposed at this location, there'd be calming measures. And there's a, a plan that, that we've seen that would entail putting perhaps a, a signal light at that location, a crosswalk blinking light, to facilitate safe crossing at that location with the bulb-outs. And then finally, this is the public right-of-way. This is the section here that would facilitate a contiguous strip of crossing. So I haven't come to complete closure on this decision. I want to hear the rest of the comments from my colleagues, but I am aware of these larger policy goals that we've been talking about for many years.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Hoaworth?
Yeah, I, I, I think I feel the same way you, you do, Councilmember Lesser, that I, I do want to support the larger policy goals, but I hear what the Chases are saying as well. You know, I, I think it's, I want to point out how wonderful it is that it was a group of students from American Martyrs who kind of brought this forward years ago, right, and talked about their concerns, and here's some ideas. And some of this has been generated by that. And I think we ought to take a moment and acknowledge, you know, young people can make a difference. I also want to point out, Councilmember Franklin, when you, or, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem, the north-south crossing, as you mentioned, like why a Pacific kid wouldn't cross to go to Grand View, right? Like you're saying, that's what, I think that's the point you were making.
Well, just in volume.
Of course, of course. No, I mean, you're right. But I, I do wonder, again, and I don't know if it's an issue, but maybe if there are kids walking to Martyrs, you know, they're coming from all different areas and of the, the community. So I do want safety. And I do, you know, it, we have heard repeatedly, actually, on, in the Hill section, I remember when we were working on the Gilsons issue, and a lot of the neighbors were talking about there's no sidewalks up there, and there's a lot of room up there for sidewalks. room up there for sidewalks, right? And, you know, this is going to be really dangerous because now the kids are, you know, walking in the street and there's cars going to Gilson's, right? I think, I do like sidewalks where we can have sidewalks. So that's kind of where I'm leaning right now, but I'm open if maybe there's a, in terms of, I, I mean, I support the project in general, but I'm, I'm talking about the specific stretch that, um, the Chases brought up, so.
Thank you. That'd be Flornoy Road North from Valley Drive. Additive B.
Yes.
Councilmember Polatano?
Thank you, Your Honor. I agree with Councilor Lesser. While I am certainly sympathetic, I'd like to, and I'll be more specific though than Councilor Lesser in saying that I think that I appreciate the compromise that was proposed that would save the two trees there. And even if narrowing the, the street takes a couple of feet, so be it, it'll be a traffic calming measure there as well. But, um, you know, we, we've heard from so many folks, I, I, I'm not going to suppose that, that everyone's crossing for school. That's just one thing. A lot of people cross there just to get to the pathway and, you know, while they have the benefit of the parkway across the street from them, the burden is other people want to use it too. And we've talked about safety at this intersection more than a couple of times. Now we're talking about it at other, uh, sections of Valley Drive, a little farther northeast from this. So this is another one in those series, I, I think, you know, while, again, I appreciate, uh, that they want to avoid any impact, you know, I don't think that this is going to be such an impact and so negative that it's going to change much, except it will change the access to the Veterans Parkway. And we have stairs there for a reason. That is an access point. We have stairs along other areas, again, access points. And, you know, we, we talked about encouraging the use of it, we talked about safety, we talked about everyone else until someone complains. And again, while I appreciate it, I think the compromise keeps enough of the landscaping while providing for a safe access point. I don't see sidewalks over the place over there at all. But we need access points, we need focal points for drivers to understand that this is an area where people do cross and it's a safe area for people to cross.
Understood. No other comments? I'll add my comments here now. Three things I could hear and all about, and I was with the prior council and Councilor Polatano on the days of Grandview constantly requesting more access and more mobility and safety for walkers in the street, walk to school. Remember the walking school bus we did? All of us have done at least twice, um, and that was a common theme. And if you listen to the council, you've heard the conversations when parents will come speak to council about how they don't feel safe with their kids walking on the street. We've had accidents or near accidents all along Valley. So we can't do one thing and say the other, or vice versa. The second part of it, I think, is a public right of way issue, um, that they've had, Chases were lucky, they've had the advantage of nothing happening there for thirty-something years, and that's fantastic. But the city is looking at it something to do, and the fact that residents have asked us to make that a corner of safety along with the master plan. But with that said, I would propose to my colleagues that if we do adopt this tonight, I, I think everything else is fine, that we go with Director Lee's Plan B to minimize the sidewalk and minimize the access, um, closeness or proximity to the Chase's front door and make it more of a, what would that be, easterly push with your swale design. And if the, as Councilor Polatano talked about, if we have people that park her with the swale, so be it. But everyone's treated equally. It's no different anywhere else in the city. So, um, I'm good from that point forward.
You can put a red stripe of no parking there, too.
That's true. For the Chase family, you can look at, at, at Director Lee, maybe a red stripe is probably the way to handle that corner and restrict anybody from parking on that area close to the Chase's front door. So with that, I'll look for a motion from my colleague, yes?
Does that, is that also the same, that's the same as your compromise issue, is that correct?
Plan B?
No, well, I'm, what Councilmember Napolitano said, that.
Save the trees?
Save the trees? Does that save the trees?
The Plan B option, Director Lee, is that save the tree, trees, plural?
So, so to be clear, that what's being referred to as Plan B would be narrowing of the street. We'd be able to keep, uh, one of the two trees that were, uh, otherwise would have been removed. Um, the sidewalk will be a little narrower than we originally were intending, um, but it will be built and then all the, the bulb outs and the, the traffic calming on, on Valley will also be installed.
Perfect. So, Mayor Tom Franklin?
And, uh, is it going to take away the parking then on both sides of the street?
One side.
So we're going to lose one?
Just one side.
On one side.
So, so will, the net result will be parking only on one side?
And I think.
Where people are parking on both sides.
It's a total of seven spaces that, that are lost.
Okay, but there's more than that now, right? Because, okay.
There's seven more.
Perfect. So I need a motion, thank you, sir. Need a motion by Councilmember Hoaworth. I need a second. By Councilor Polatano. And a voting screen, please.
Could I, uh, could I ask for a friendly amendment then? I mean, to accept this Plan B?
We made, that was part of the motion, we're going to go with Plan B.
Okay, great, just wanted to.
Can I ask a question? What is?
Wait, wait, we'll talk afterwards. We'll talk afterwards.
I just wonder if the trees are going to be cut down or not?
We'll talk afterwards. Voting screen up. There we go.
One tree cut down.
Motion passes five zero.
Your Honor?
So, yes.
Break time?
Yes, we're going to take a break now for like seven minutes, everybody, and we'll come back in seven minutes. Everybody stretch your legs for that time.
I don't want to say.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody. Welcome back to our meeting here. We left off with discussion on item number eight. I want to go back. Sorry, that was on the dissent counter. Item J, Public Hearing is item number 10. Consideration of Resolution Adopting a List of Street Repair Projects for Fiscal Year 2023-24, Funded by Senate Bill 1. I'll stop there with the report from Public Works Director Lee or his representative.
I'm the senior. Good evening, sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Montgomery and the City Council members. I'm Helen Shi, Senior Sewer Engineer from Public Works.
Welcome, Ellen.
Thank you. So, thank you for approving Cycle Two Street Resurfacing Projects. Now it's time to talk about money. So I'm here to present Senator Bill Number One for the Street Repair and Maintenance. Beginning in 2017, the city has been adopting resolution for the project list of the street segments as a condition of receiving SB 1 funds. So far, the City Council has approved six resolutions since 2017. So for fiscal year 23 and 24, the city is expected to receive $876,876 of in the SB 1 revenues, which will be used for street repair and maintenance. The city is required to approve a list of qualifying street segments, which, for this case, is included as Cycle Two Street Resurfacing Projects, which is just approved by the City Council. Therefore, the city staff is recommending that the City Council approve a resolution to adopt Cycle Two Street Resurfacing Projects, Street Segments, which will be funded in part by SB 1 funds to support rehabilitation efforts for the upcoming fiscal year 23-24. Thank you.
Fantastic. Ellen, before you go, one question. I forgot to ask earlier on the Florentinoi project. Talk about the Triennial Payment Program, TPM for short. I never asked, what grade did these roads receive? If it's A to F, are they all F for failure? Are they D for very bad? What condition are these according to our TPM? Do you know?
It's at the range of 60, 50, 70. It's at the lower end. Usually it needs to be, I remember, I can't be accurate, but it has to be 80 or 90s. So our number is not as good as it's supposed to be.
The congestion ratings are A through F, and then the numerical is the TPM.
Got it. So we're on the low, that's the best way to say it. On the low end of the scale, it needs to be repaired or replaced.
Nationwide, we're not the worst, but we're not at the, you know, acceptable level.
Where we should be.
Right.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Any other questions for Helen? She's here. Counsel? None? Thank you, Helen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment on this item. This is item number 10. Exciting part of our discussion.
Open the public hearing.
Yes. Now I'm going to ask, open public hearing, which I just did. Then we're going to officially by our city attorney. Any comments by Zoom, Martha? So we'll close public hearing. Counsel?
So move.
Motion to approve by Councilor Polatano.
It was seconded by Councilwoman Franklin.
Oh, okay.
And seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Franklin. Voting screen, please.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Helen has the fastest recorded approval time in history.
It's the persuasiveness of the presentation.
All right, folks. Let's bring us to item 11 under General Business. Consider taking City Council positions on a variety of pending legislation in the state legislature regarding homelessness, public safety, and housing, with the report from Assistant City Manager George Gabriel, trying to convince City Manager Mo to go upstairs and feel better. All right. Mr. Gabriel, the floor is yours.
Honorable Mayor Montgomery and members of the City Council. This item comes before you tonight regarding the consideration of taking City Council positions on pending legislation and the state legislature. Obviously, this is all legislation that's being proposed right now. It's working its way through all the committees and such, and eventually may reach its way to the governor's desk for final approval. But that's later on, probably in September or potentially earlier. That being said, staff has identified 10 bills that may have impacts on the city. Some impacts that the city could be supportive of and some impacts that the city could potentially oppose. These pieces of legislation are Senate Bill 43 regarding behavioral health, in essence revising the gravely disabled definition language to assist our homeless population. SB 363, that is also regarding homelessness, and that's basically to provide a real-time availability of substance abuse and mental health, bed availability particularly, as well as AB 67, which is Homeless Courts Pilot Program, which I know this council has been particularly interested in trying to adopt in somewhat of a Redondo Beach model. And so these three pieces of legislation are connected to homelessness, and the city, the staff is recommending that the City Council express a position of support for these pieces of legislation, as they are pieces of legislation that will assist the city's response to homelessness. So that's the first tranche. The second tranche is related to public safety, and this is AB 1708, as well as AB 23, and this is actually authored by our local State Assembly Member Almer Suji. And so both of these bills actually are amendments to Proposition 47, and they would revise the existing language on the designation to which it would rise above a misdemeanor, potentially a felony, as well as changing the value limitations associated with theft. The city's police department and other law enforcement agencies have expressed concerns with how changes in theft-related regulations have reduced consequences of theft crimes, primarily due to Proposition 47. And therefore, we are, the staff is recommending that the city support these bills to further deter criminals by increasing penalties associated with these crimes. And so those are the two public safety-related bills. And then there are five pieces of legislation that is housing, land use, and local control-related. These are AB 1532, SB 423, SB 4, AB 1490, as well as Assembly Constitutional Amendment 10. I won't go into great detail on these bills, but in essence, they follow some of the same concerns the City Council has actually adopted positions on in the past regarding land use authority and reducing local control that the city has the right to designate as so pleases. And so the staff is also recommending that we, that the City Council express positions of opposition on those bills. In the staff report, we've detailed the league's position on some of these pieces of legislation as well. They're available in the staff report. I can also answer those questions if you're interested in knowing which one of those bills that the league is taking a position on. So with that being said, staff has recommended that the City Council authorize staff to express the following positions on this legislation listed in the staff report, particularly SB 43, SB 363, AB 67, and AB 1708, and AB 23 as support positions and opposed positions on AB 1532, SB 423, SB 4, AB 1490, and ACA 10. With that, I'm open to counsel questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Horwath and Councilmember Lesser.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. George, on Assembly Bill 23, you know, the amendment to Prop 47. So let's say we, the bill passes. It doesn't do anything because it still has to get on the ballot, and the voters would still have to amend it.
Yes. Thank you for making that clarification. I was remiss to mention that.
I mean, but Assembly Bill 1708 is different.
No, that, I believe.
It doesn't say the same thing.
Yes. I don't think I put that language in AB 23, but I think it's also applicable to AB 1708 because it amends Proposition 47, which was passed by voters.
Just want to make that clarification.
Yes.
I mean, it's still, I understand the need to, you know, take a position on it, and I hope we will. But I just want to point that out.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification.
Councilmember Lesser.
Just a process question, which may be a question to you, Mr. Mayor, but let me just ask you, George. And that is, if council decides to proceed and follow the recommendation of staff on these pieces of legislation, is our position just going to be memorialized in letters? Or is there some further lobbying that's contemplated, and if so, what?
Well, we take a couple of actions. We write letters where appropriate. We communicate to the legislative bodies in terms of the committees that the pieces of legislation are designated to. We inform the league of our position. They add our city to a list of cities that are opposing or supporting said legislation. And then we also place it on our website. We actually have a webpage called Legislative Positions within the City Council sub-pages, and that basically indicates what positions the City Council is taking on a variety of legislation.
Over the years, council has authorized staff to engage lobbyists, to take further steps on pieces of legislation. I just wanted to confirm with this particular position that we're being asked to take tonight on these pieces of legislation. At this point, it's consistent with what you've just said. Is that right?
Yes. I mean, primarily in terms of our lobbyists, though. The league of California cities is our primary lobbyist. We don't engage with an individual lobbying organization.
This is all work that you have generated.
Correct.
And, right. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other council comments or questions? Seeing none. Thank you, sir. Open up public comment on this item number 11. Anyone wants to speak on this item number 11?
As far as the homeless situation, that's always a challenging problem. But housing the homeless doesn't solve the problem. The problem, there's root causes, which is either, you know, mental health issues, drug abuse, and then, of course, you get the people who are down on their luck. And those are the people that you truly, you know, you get them back on their feet, you get them in housed, and then you get them solved. But if we just add, keep adding more and more infrastructure and giving more and more things away, we start attracting more homeless, which is, you know, kind of a different way of looking at it. But you're not solving the problem, because if they've got drug addictions, you just put them in a house, then they're going to be doing drugs in the house. So that becomes problematic. And on the theft issue, it's anything we can do to reduce theft. And then on the theft amount, Biden is working aggressively to this. By the time inflation hits, pretty soon 950s can be nothing. And then anything we can do to get all of our zoning back to our city and eliminate Sacramento from doing statewide mandates on our housing would be absolutely amazing. So anything else you can do along those lines? Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience here to talk about item number 11? Seeing none. Anyone on Zoom, please, Martha? So we'll pub, I'm sorry, we'll close public comment on item number 11. Counsel?
Just, I had just a quick clarification. Sorry. I assumed you were. So, there you go. I just had a clarification. Somebody, Mr. Joseph, just said for the petty theft amount, it's a good thing to reduce it to 400, right? Like, I, okay. I just, I thought that what you were, anyway. Clarifying. Thank you.
That's a yes?
Yeah. I know it is. I just didn't under, great.
Those of you watching this at home and not hearing the reverb, thankfully, let you know, our police department did look at this, and they endorsed both of these items that have to do with Assembly Bill 1708 by our very own local Almer Suji and Assembly Bill 23 also by Mr. Merisucci. So I now understand it has to go through the statewide process because it's in opposition to State Initiative 47, but it's the first step forward that we've seen in years. Someone actually had the courage to step up and make this, actually bring it forward. So I'm actually in support of all of it. First by Councilwoman Polatano and a second by Member Tim Franklin. Voting screen, please.
Yes, and it's to authorize staff to express the following positions as stated here in the report.
Perfect. Thank you.
Motion passes 5-0.
Fantastic.
But I do want to say again, thank you to George and staff for this analysis, bringing all of this forward. This was very helpful.
Yes. Thanks to all. Next item in general business, item number 12. Consideration of the city sponsoring a Juneteenth celebration event at Bruce's Beach Park. I'll start for a second before the city manager takes over and lay the groundwork for this one, because it seems to be a lot of confusion out there, what's going on, and I want to set the table straight here. City Manager Mo reached me while I was out of town and asked me if I would add this item to, this discussion item to the agenda. And the reason why he asked me that was because his concern was that the council were to approve an event to be held at Bruce's Beach Park. It was shortening down the time staff would have to, A, plan for it. It's moving pieces, folks. Public Works, Parks and Rec, police, fire. Everyone's involved when you have an event. It's not just one person puts on a hat and runs it all day long. So option, first thing was planning on a short time fuse. Second was the fact that money. The request was, would the city consider paying for an event? So no one on council made this happen. It was my decision to put on the agenda. You want to get mad at someone, be mad at me, because otherwise, it did skip the process, to be honest. The process is, any council member wants to discuss an item or the public wants to discuss an item, it takes two councilmembers to put it on an agenda item to discuss. That didn't happen here because of the time and the money. Made a prudent decision, and I usually answer the manager's requests. When they ask for a favor, ask something in timing. I made it put on the agenda because otherwise, you'd have the same conversation two weeks from now. So in order to get to that point, we moved it up and put it here. That's how the whole event happened. But that said, it's a discussion. There's no plan in place, nothing planned in place. There's no scoop, an event plan in place, and there isn't any money dedicated in place. This is just a discussion at the city manager's requests. That's the history of it. Let's see anything else. Ah, the bypassing. And again, that's on me. This won't happen again. The only time we bypass the normal procedure, put an item on the agenda, is an emergency. Technically, it doesn't qualify as an emergency. But the city manager asked, I made a decision to put it on here. That's the story of what happened. Other than that, City Manager Mo, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I have nothing further to add, except that Ali Latrani will give us some background on this and certainly answer any questions council or public may have.
Thank you.
Hi, Alexandria Latrani. I'm the Acting Communications and Civic Engagement Manager. The item before you is the consideration of the city sponsoring a Juneteenth celebration at Bruce's Beach Park. Juneteenth, just to give a little background about what the holiday is, it commemorates the June 19th, 1865, when enslaved people got the news that they were no longer enslaved and were made free by the Emancipation Proclamation two years prior to that and the end of the Civil War at the time. It's an official holiday, federal holiday as of 2021. California has recognized it as well, and it's the oldest known commemoration of the abolition of slavery in the United States. There have been a number of requests for hosting Juneteenth events at Bruce's Beach Park over the last few years. The city has never issued a permit for any sort of special event to take place at Bruce's Beach Park because we do have a special events policy, and outside organizations wouldn't be permitted to host an event at Bruce's Beach Park because that park is specifically excluded from that special events policy. And the policy itself does define what a special event is. And while a Juneteenth event would likely fall into that definition, even if it's hosted by the city, the city doesn't issue permits to itself for special events and excluded from this permitting process. So I just want to clarify that this item doesn't change our special events policy in any way whatsoever, nor does it propose to. Should the council direct staff to plan a Juneteenth event? Staff recommends that they provide direction on the date, time, and scale of the event. For example, should it be a ceremony with dignitaries? Should it be performers or children's activities? There's many different varying degrees of what an event might look like. And so we would seek any sort of direction from council on that. And it's important to note, of course, that if an event takes place, that we would need to follow all of the applicable laws and rules of the park. We would, of course, fully enforce those laws and rules as have been previously outlined by our municipal code for everyone. Additionally, should there be direction to plan an event? Staff recommends that the City Council appropriate the appropriate funding for accommodating such an event. And just in giving a little bit of additional background about Juneteenth, there are a number of other jurisdictions which have recognized or do recognize Juneteenth with a wide array of celebrations, so they really vary in degree again. But Redondo Beach, Gardena, Carson, Inglewood, City of Irvine, Laguna Beach, Ventura County, LA County, and the City of Santa Barbara, just to name a few. So at this time, staff recommends that the City Council discuss and provide direction on this item, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ali. Counsel, any questions? Seeing none? Public, Councilmember Lesser?
I do have some questions, Ali. I sent you a whole list of questions in advance, and I recognize the purpose of staff's being here tonight is to receive questions and comments and direction from council. But I'm not clear as to what the scope of what this event could be. What are we talking about? Are we talking about potentially spoken word, music, food, art activities for kids? I mean, obviously, it could be any of those, but can you kind of set up, what are we talking about? What type of event would a Juneteenth event include?
Well, other events have, that I saw, some of them were really small events in other jurisdictions I'm talking about, but small events where it was, you invite some dignitaries and have a speaker, you know, that's one type of event. Other events are much larger events that have, you know, food trucks and performers and activities. So it really varies in scale, and so staff would certainly want to host an event that is appropriate for the park, appropriate for the community, and is really seeking that direction from City Council.
But by extension, that would imply amplified sound of some kind, whether for spoken word or for music. Is that right?
It could.
Yeah. Harking is obviously a concern for many who live near there. Any idea of estimated attendance? Obviously, it depends on the scope and scale of the event and what day it's held, but any guidance that you, staff, can offer?
I don't have any, you know, estimation on how many people might attend. I suppose it depends on how broadly we cast this net. There are a number of other Juneteenth events going on in the surrounding area, including Holly Mitchell's office is hosting a Juneteenth event that weekend in South LA. So there are other events going on, so it's not like the only event that is in the area for people who would like to celebrate Juneteenth, for them to attend.
Okay. And just finally- Okay, and just finally, I had asked staff whether there were any issues with an alternative location, namely Polywog Park, either on that Saturday, the 17th, Sunday, the 18th, or Monday, which is the federal holiday, the 19th, at Polywog Park.
Yes, and I checked in on the reservations, we don't have any reservations for that weekend.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Ms. Ray.
Counselor Blesser, Counselor Hohworth?
Yeah, you might want to, this is the question time, so I have to ask questions.
Oh, sorry, I thought.
No, 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 it's fine. So when we just had the dedication of the Bruce's Beach plaque, do we have any idea how many people attended that? I mean, I'm sorry, I.
I'm not good at crowd estimating, but.
You know, the folks I talked to, it seemed like there were a couple hundred.
Mm-hmm, and we, I believe we amplified the mayor's comments.
See you?
I know, to see you. Did we amplify your comments, or was I, okay.
Amplified themselves.
The, oh my God. But I'm bumpum. And were there any, do we know that, were there any complaints from that day? Were there any complaints about, from the neighbors, or?
I.
Yeah.
Not aware of any.
Okay.
And just a note about the amplified music, just because, or amplified sound, just because you brought it up, there is a municipal code that relates to amplified sound, and typically, it would, well, it does require a permit to be issued, however, there's an exemption for government entities for that.
Right, and I, to clarify, or to amplify, what you had, sorry, what you had said in the beginning of your comments, this is not, or maybe it was what the mayor had said, there's no group that's coming forward and saying, we want to do this, we want, this is the city saying, we may want to do this. So there were some comments made in public comments and in some of the letters about, you know, loopholes for, you know, the permit, you know, an exception for the permit. We have always, like you said, maintained that we have the right to do an event on our, in our parks. As we did, I believe, National Night Out, it's always the first Tuesday in August, and we, Neighborhood Watch had an event at, what is it, the Eighth Street Parket? Is that what it is, on the east side? Right, so we did that there, and I don't think there was any extra parking or anything like that, but I just wanted to clarify that. And then I'll have some, perhaps other questions, but comments later. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mayor Tim Franklin?
Yes. So can you review the, the rules of Bruce's Beach, you know, for like a normal?
Thank you.
Absolutely, and I actually have a slide that the Assistant City Clerk Alvarez will pull up for us. But there is a code of conduct that's in our municipal code, it's municipal code 12.48.050. And I'm going to read it from here because I probably need glasses. But it's prohibited alcohol consumption and driving or parking vehicles, it must be parked in designated areas, there's no golfing or chipping, putting, no dunk tanks or carnival rides or moon bounces, you can't ride your bicycle or tricycles or unicycles, you can't rope off areas, there's some rules relating to dogs, use of skateboards or other recreational wheel devices, generating any amplified sound, hanging items or posting any items on trees, playing athletic games in areas other than those that are appropriate for athletic fields, flying radio controlled or other powered motor model airplanes, use of any barbecue other than those provided by the city. And then there's some other that, others, rules that relate to causing damage to city property. And of course, as I mentioned, all city laws must be obeyed, including those prohibiting destruction of city property.
Okay, so we've heard from residents, both here in the chambers and also through email, that the last three years have been problematic for Bruce's Beach, both in terms of the behaviors exhibited there and the enforcement of these very same rules. Do we have an idea of how many enforcement issues we had with, you know, on, you know, I'm not going to say unlawful, you know, but behavior that violated these park rules and regulations?
I don't have any numbers on, you know, numbers of tickets issued for that type of thing. You know, typically, the, the park is a very quiet park, and during events held previously at Juneteenth, I don't have any numbers about citations issued.
And typically, the police department will try to gain compliance before issuing any citations.
Okay, but I'm just asking, have there been citations issued? Have there been calls?
I'm sure there have been citations issued, but I, we don't have the number here. I'm just saying that typically, typically, we're enforcing and gaining compliance, and citations won't necessarily tell you the whole story.
Okay, number of calls, I mean, we had one, you know, resident at 2700 The Strand said they called 45 times. We saw, I don't know if you saw those pictures in detail, but those are pretty graphic pictures from their security cameras.
Sure.
Were those during an event?
That's not the park.
Yeah, I did not think them to be related to an event out there.
Right, well, I'm just trying to get in the area, you know, has there been compliance with these rules? Specifically, generally?
If you don't know, you get back to us on the answer.
But I will say that, as you know, we have the park ranger that is out there regularly, we've had CSC out there regularly, we enforce the park rules, we put out sandwich boards to make sure people know what the rules are. So we've, we've done a good job in the last year at least of making sure that people are aware of the rules and that they're enforced.
Okay, I'm, I'm just looking for some numbers, you know, some, you know, quantitative, how many calls, those type of thing, complaints. I, I know you don't have the numbers right now, but.
We'll, we'll provide the.
I like to get a, you know, an idea of the scope of that. Okay, that's, that's it for now.
Thank you, Ally. No questions for now. I will open up public comment. All of you that spoke on this previously, sit back and listen. Those of you that not spoke on it previously, please come speak.
Good evening, Mayor Montgomery, Members of City Council, Mike Jenkins, 44-year resident, member of the Bruce's Beach Task Force, and member of MB United. I want to thank your staff, I appreciate them bringing this item to your attention. Given the time constraints this year, I support for this June, a modest, city-sponsored commemoration of Juneteenth at Bruce's Beach, something that can be realistically planned in two months' time, and will simply send a message that we are a community that takes responsibility for and rejects the racist act that occurred on this site a century ago. The park can certainly handle a modest-sized event without significant disruption to the neighborhood. The 2021 event went very smoothly. Honestly, residents who live near our parks put up with a lot of disruption, year-round. I mean, consider the Hometown Fair, is there parking? Do you hear the music and the noise many, many blocks away from the Hometown Fair? How about the summer concerts at Polywog Park? The music can be heard throughout the neighborhoods that ring around the park. Though, the Bruce's Beach Park is no different, maybe smaller, but in terms of its location near residences, it's no different than our other parks. Our other parks have summer, have sports events, pickleball courts create noise for the people who live right across the street. Concerns expressed here from neighbors who chose to live next to a park and enjoy its benefits year-round ring hollow and are a bit selfish under the circumstances. And honestly, I don't really see what the relevance is of misbehavior by individuals who may be drinking or misbehaving down near The Strand, not in the park, unrelated to any special events, and what that has to do with this item. If you're going to get statistics about misbehavior at Bruce's Beach or at The Strand, get it for all your parks. Thank you very much for your time.
Yes, sir, appreciate that.
I want to get one of those bells for my home. My name is Christy Hogan, I'm a 30-year resident and business owner here in, in town, and I want to thank you, Mayor Montgomery, for answering the city manager's call and making sure that the timing didn't preclude just even considering the possibility. I also want to just offer a couple of benefits I think come from a city-sponsored Juneteenth celebration. The first is that the story provides an opportunity to remember just how much it takes to be who we want to be in this democracy. As staff noted, the Emancipation Proclamation took effect in January of 1863, and inspiring as those words were, it did not end slavery, and in fact, enslaved people in Texas didn't even get the word until June 19th, 1865. So our kids, who if they're following the right people on TikTok or Twitter, can tell you what happened in Kiev 10 minutes ago, or what Taylor Swift is wearing right now, has the opportunity to understand what it took to effectuate that proclamation in the 19th century, and also to wrap their heads around the significance to who we are as Americans, that eventually 2,000 Union soldiers showed up in Galveston with a hard copy of the proclamation. Second, and more importantly, viewed from the highest altitude, Juneteenth celebrates how a government of the people, by the people, and for the people can begin to right wrongs. That self-government can do big things, important things, moral things, and as someone who's dedicated her whole life, professional life, to local government, talking to members of my community who've made the sacrifices to serve the public, I say that government doing the right thing is worth celebrating. I'd add, I think it's even worth amplifying, so I hope you agree.
Thank you, Christy. Any speakers here in the building that want to speak on this item? Seeing none? Zoom, please, Martha. iPhone 3, all right?
Hello?
Hello, you're, you're live. Go ahead.
Hi, hi, my name is Lucia Lottakings, I'm a resident from Manhattan Beach. First, I would like to share the comments of the last speaker, we needed to celebrate June 19th. It's not just a time to commemorate the end of, the end of slavery, emancipation, also the achievements that have been, that have been, you know, that we have had in, in terms of equality and equity. I do not agree that the kids don't know about Juneteenth, I have children, both public and private school, and they both study and learning. That aside, I don't think that the commemoration has to be done on Bruce's Beach. The staff had a very legalistic approach. Yes, it's true that technically, legally, this is different because you're allowed to issue a permit to yourself, but clearly, the spirit of the law, which was to protect a park that is considered neighborhood, a neighborhood park, would be violated if you sponsor an event there. And, and then why should be only Juneteenth? Then you can do, this is a result, in the future, the city goes to the same with other federal holiday, Washington, New Christmas, Columbus Day, or the light, the day for light, which is an open federal day of events, it's been instituted by Ronald Reagan, and it falls on, on January 22nd. So I hope that you decide to preserve the park and its nature. It's been said that it's, it's quiet, but now it's quiet, you cannot protect it as the pictures of defecating, urinating, and consuming alcohol. Roots. So if the city is not able to do a good job to make the respect of the rules.
Thank you, Lucia. Thank you, appreciate that. Anyone else on Zoom? Okay.
I'm sorry, this is my kid's computer and I can't rename myself, this is Heather Kim, and I am opposed to any such, you know, city-sponsored event here. This park at 2600 Highland Avenue, it's not as, you know, as I've seen on social media and other places, black soil. And what happened was, there was a Black Kitty Festival, I think that's what it was called, maybe about a year ago, and there was, there were a lot of things happening at that park. And no, there were no, you know, citations and things like that, the, the police department, and I actually do understand the rationale, you have a lot of people, and, you know, is the squeeze worth the juice, or the juice worth the squeeze, whatever that saying is, you know, because you have, you don't want the police to go in there unless something really egregious was happening and then incite, you know, a lot of, you know, violence or whatever. So thankfully, nobody was hurt, and there wasn't some big, you know, what you want to call it, like huge bad thing that happened. But I will say that, you know, there were dozens and dozens of people openly drinking and doing marijuana, and they were, you know, urinating on people's property there, I mean, this was all happening, okay? And I drove by and I witnessed this myself, and maybe not a lot of citations were issued because the, the police were told not to. And there was not, it was not racism on that side, and this is why we probably need to rename this, this park. It's nothing to do with the Bruce's at this location, it's not meant for this type of huge, huge event, and even though the people at The Strand, I mean, they're, they just said that they're getting bombarded the past couple of years with all kinds of.
Thank you, thank you for your comments, Heather, appreciate that. Our next speaker? Okay. Wait, sir, we're not done. I appreciate your enthusiasm, though. Our next speaker?
Thank you very much, actually, am I on? This is Tim Jones.
Yes, you're live.
Thanks so much. Actually, I truly tried not to have to speak this evening, but some of the opposition comments just pulled it out of me. Just this evening, I spoke with a friend that I'd met during the plaque ceremony. The friend lives on 25th Street, and he lives in the Patterson House that once was located on Bruce's Beach Park. We met, like I said, at the ceremony, it's a white family that was unaware of the historical significance of the home in which they were living. From that point, it has been a love fest. The family has delved more into the history of not only the house in which they live, but the area in which they live, and brought their neighbors into it. I asked him if he would be able to come this evening, unfortunately, he had something planned, but he would definitely be willing to speak to the council and to the community to help them learn more about what he and his family have learned by living in that environment. He pointed out that the events that he's seen at Bruce's Beach, not only since the plaque ceremony we'd met, but the beach, the park in and of itself, is more of a area of reverence by the black and African Americans that have come into the area. And I echoed my sentiment because that's exactly the way that I feel. It's an area that we pay, that we pay respect and loyalty because it's an area that was actually looked at as a spot in which we finally had an opportunity to make a decision that affected our future and our lives. So counter to, to my good friend Joe Franklin, this is a testimony by others that is a direct opposite of the hard. And I'll leave it at that, thanks so much for listening.
Thank you, Tim. Our next speaker, Martha? No one else on Zoom? Yes, sir, floor is yours, please.
I am Stan Johnson, I live nearby here, but I've been listening to this, trying to figure out what's, what's going on, and I've heard that the council has turned it down twice, saying that there should be no events at this park. I think if I went to the city council and said, I want to have a 4th of July presentation, you would say no immediately, there wouldn't even be a discussion. And I don't see what the difference is here. We have a national holiday as of less than two years ago, probably half the people in Manhattan Beach don't even know what Juneteenth is, and that's probably not a degradation. I had talked to four people this morning, and no one knew what it was. And we are all college graduate, professional people. And we are all college graduate, professional people, retired. So I think we're just doing a public relations thing to even consider having it at any parquet or Bruce's Beach. If it wants to be held at Polywog, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We do have someone else on Zoom?
Uh, yes, it was the last minute race, Tim.
All right. Did Lee Phillips speak on this item earlier?
I did not.
Oh, thank you, Lee.
So anyway, I just want to first make a couple of comments. One is on the legislation text. I didn't think it was balanced. It did capture that people wanted an event, but it didn't capture the people who were opposed to the event and the problems associated with that. And some of the people did comment on that, but I think we really need to take a look at the numbers. Like, how many calls were made to the police that day? What were the, and the city, what were the actions of those calls? And I think that's important. And I'm in favor of a Juneteenth event. I'm not tied to Bruce's Beach, and this is why. I find it really constricting. It's like, you know, we're celebrating, but we're only allowed to celebrate at Bruce's Beach. And I, and I believe that's constricting. I think Juneteenth should be celebrated anywhere in the city and in multiple ways because that's freedom. You know, there should be an art exhibit in the, in the art gallery. It's very powerful to have something at the Civic Center. Can you imagine gathering at the Civic Center for an event? That's much more powerful than at a park. Can you imagine teaching kids how to surf on the beach? So I find just restricting a celebration to Bruce's Beach very constricting. Like, that's the only place African-Americans can celebrate in the city. We should be thinking broader. And I, and I think Polywog Park is a great place. Can you imagine a play at Polywog Park attracting hundreds of people? So I support a celebration. I just don't think Bruce's Beach is the right place for it. It's problematic, and we really need to look at the numbers to understand the seriousness and the consequences of the past events there. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Hit the tape, all right? And one more speaker, all right? What's the name? No good? All right. Anyone else here not spoken on this item, care to speak? All right, well, close, public comment, council. Who wants to go first?
I pressed my button.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Howard. You actually did press your button, thank you.
I've been pressing my button, anyway. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, you know, I heard a comment tonight about, you know, half the people in the town don't even know what Juneteenth is, which is exactly why we must do a Juneteenth event. I think when you read the news from Redondo Beach's decision, they talk about the need to educate people. What a wonderful opportunity this is to educate people as to what this holiday is, what it means to Black Americans, therefore all Americans, and what it, what it is signifying. And I also hear about folks talking about the Bruce's Beach location. And I, you know, we are, I think one of the comments tonight was, we are two months out. And that was actually why, you know, it was timely and you wanted to put it on the agenda. So I don't see a very large event even being logical, even if it were at Polywog, let's say. And I think it should be at Bruce's Beach. But I don't think, you know, we have enough time to do something grand and, you know, certainly no bounce house, it's not allowed at the parks, no alcohol. And I'm being a little bit flip here, only because the very reason we should do this is so that we can control it. Because I tell you that if we don't do an event, a city event, this is a city event, not some other group event. It is us doing it, we can control it. If we don't do something, people will come and we cannot control the numbers. We cannot control what happens at the park. The parking is what the parking is. So, you know, that limits people right there. I, you know, there's different, I think one of the considerations we need to have is what day we hold it on. I believe Juneteenth is a Monday this year. We could have it on the Monday, we could have it on the Sunday or the Saturday. And, you know, one way to control it would be to have it on the Monday, right? Because I don't think as many people would probably come. It is a federal holiday. And I also agree, I believe it was Lee Phillips who mentioned having other events throughout the town. And I think that's something to aim for next year. I love the idea of an art gallery. I love the idea of, you know, something that in collaboration with businesses, you know, I think they would really get behind that. And I actually think the best partner would be the school district. And in fact, you know, so next year, maybe there could be something that would be maybe a little something at Bruce's Beach, maybe something at Polywog, or maybe the kids would be really involved in it. And I think that would be such a tremendous thing to see. There would be ripple effects. You know, and I take a little bit of exception. There are so many comments made tonight about this isn't appropriate for a large event. I don't think it's appropriate, Bruce's Beach Park, for a large event either. I don't. Let's, and, and an event, I think one of the public comments was about an event in 2021, which was when, I know, I think it was Kevon Ward or somebody had organized, or somebody had organized, there were a couple of food trucks. There was, it was very small. It seemed, I don't think there were complaints then. With regards to the Black Kitty Festival, I think that's what a caller said it was called. That was not a sanctioned event. That was not a thing that the city said, sure, go ahead and do that. We like that idea. And so, again, that's something that perhaps went out on the social media, took over. We need to control this. We need to own this and we can control it. So I think it's consistent with our policy. It's not a special event that somebody else is doing, it's a city event. So, small, maybe it's a community picnic, maybe it's, you know, a speaker, decide on the day, and next year, aim to work with others to build it up. But that would be, that would be my recommendation. Have it at Bruce's Beach, you know, work with the neighbors, include the neighbors. Do something to honor the holiday and educate the community, those who might not know, and build towards something different and maybe bigger for next year.
Thank you. Councilwoman Leser?
I have not pushed my button, but I'm happy to speak.
Since you've not pushed your button, that was going down the order.
I am supportive of the city hosting a Juneteenth celebration, but I have concerns about Bruce's Beach. I welcome an event that acknowledges this holiday and is open to all, as we are as a city. But having lived near that park and recalling what challenges there were with parking and the events, my personal view is this sort of event is unlikely to attract a very large number of people. But to the extent that these issues can get out of control on social media, and many people might congregate, depending upon what day we land, I'm thinking about where the city has successfully hosted other events in the past. It's Polywog Park. It's about our city as a whole celebrating this holiday, and it doesn't need to be directly associated with Bruce's Beach, as the caller we heard moments ago indicated. So I would be receptive to moving forward with an event, recognizing that with just two months for planning for this year, it likely would be a small event. But that's okay. It's the point of doing it and moving forward together as a community. I mean, I also have to just digress and say, for someone who recently unexpectedly ran again to be on the city council, part of my objective for being up here again is to see where we can find consensus as a community. It just doesn't make sense to try and push something through where perhaps out of fear or misinformation, there are residents who are angry and we're stoking that. The whole point of this, as I see it, is to try and bring our community together. And that's why I would say, okay, there are legitimate concerns of, by neighbors who live close to Bruce's Beach. Where have we done an event similar to this successfully? It's been at Polywog Park. Perhaps this really could be over a weekend. Perhaps this could be with food, spoken word, that we can have amplification there. We can have music. It can be positive, and I defer to my colleagues as to what the scope of this event might include, and really defer to staff as to particularly this first year, what is realistic to be able to prepare with the limited amount of time that remains.
Thank you. Councilwoman Paulotan? Going down the road. I guess I did that once or twice. Yes, you did.
Couple of things, and first of all, I just want to apologize. I received, at least I think I have, I know I have in some instances, a lot of emails, pro and con on this. And I am as frustrated as it is. If you have not heard back from me, I apologize for that because our email system has just prevented me from doing that, unfortunately. We've had an issue with our emails for the last several weeks. You know, I even tried again this morning. I tried to sign on. I couldn't sign on. Later in the afternoon, I was able to sign on, but I wouldn't, I wasn't able to respond to things. So for everyone who sent emails, yes, I will be reading them. I've got the gist of many of them, trust me. But I'm sorry, I wasn't able to get back to you. Very emails, Bruce, help me. So, sorry for not getting back to folks, but it was just not possible to do that. And for some reason, the city manager and I apparently are on a different server than other people. So I understand that mine bounced back from a number of people who tried emailing today. So sorry about that. As for this, you know, I'm, I'm torn and I'm not. Yes, I favor a Juneteenth event. And I think, obviously, right, there's a certain momentum that we have in this city at this moment, from the history report, from the art piece approval, from the apology. But I also want to separate Juneteenth from the whole Bruce's Beach history as well because it's a separate, it's not tied to it, it's representative, but it's not the same thing. It deserves celebration. I think it also demonstrates our inclusivity in Manhattan Beach, and we want to send that signal out far and wide. But I also hesitate, though, to approve anything for this year because I just think we're trying to force something with a lot of good intentions that doesn't necessarily make sense. I appreciate some of tonight's callers, and I appreciate the comments by Lee Phillips. I agree, and I think that there's a place, in a lot of different places in this city, that we could hold an event, or event over a day or two days, next year. And I know that sounds like a punt, and I suppose it is. But I said, because I would like to refer this back to the Parks and Recreation Commission to look at it and to see what would appropriate, what would be appropriate where, how we can engage people. Maybe it's performers, maybe it's a play, maybe it's music, maybe it's spoken word. And I think that, at that time, next year, I think that where we have enough planning for this, I think a perfect place to kick it off is a ceremony at Bruce's Beach Park. Something with some speakers to then kick off the events that will take place in other areas of the city, such as Polywog Park or elsewhere. But I would like to see it properly planned and, as Councilwoman Leser said, engage enough folks in that process so that it's something that is real, it's sincere, it's genuine, and we're not just trying to force it to, you know, meet the moment but then come up short because we just didn't have enough time or have enough thought. You know, I, having speakers out there, I don't know, I don't know what I'd be approving at this moment. I don't know what, who those speakers would be. I don't know what they'd be talking about. I don't know what, so I can't give a blanket approval on nothing and everything at the same time. I don't know what it would be. I don't see any hard proposal here as to what that would be. And if we're just gonna have one person speaking to people, I don't, you know, I don't know. I don't see that as really worthy of the moment either. I don't see that as a celebration. I see it as we're trying to do something and get something done so we can say we did something. But I don't see it as right. I don't see it as quality. I don't see it as being up to what our standards are and have been, should be. So I would say that we absolutely should plan something for next year that incorporates more than one site. And it could be Civic Center Plaza, like I said, a kickoff at Bruce's Beach, stops there, goes to Civic Center Plaza, goes to Polywog Park, where we have performances, where we have food trucks, whatever it might be. And really incorporate folks and make it a win. Make it a win for everyone. You know, we, we don't need the culture wars here, we don't need to create them. I think that Mike Jenkins and Kristi Hogan said it very well. I just don't think, though, that there's enough time to do this and do it right. It's good intentions that, you know, I don't think we're going to meet our standards to do a quality event in this amount of time. I, at least, I don't know how we can because I haven't seen anything. I don't know what we would be doing. I don't want to guess at that. I can't approve something tonight on just, you know, good intentions.
Thank you. May I put your Franklin, then Councilwoman Howard?
Yes, thank you. So we know the history of this, that's starting in 2018. You know, a council at the time looked at the situation there, and they're the ones that came up with the restrictions of special events at Bruce's Beach Park and the Parklets. They, that council understood the negative impact of organized events on the smaller parks. And in fact, that council crafted the restrictions and passed them five-zero. They discussed and enacted restrictions on these parks so that they could be used for quiet enjoyment and peaceful reflection by all residents and visitors. We should strive for those same goals today and even in the future. We talked about what the rules were at Bruce's Beach, and in the past three years, many of those rules have been difficult to enforce. To suggest that an organizer can guarantee their event will be moderate does not align with reality in these times of social media and word of mouth. I was gonna read an email, you know, from a resident who lives in the area. Now, these are people that live there seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. No one knows better than the, than the people we heard from that live either adjacent or, you know, within, you know, within a couple of blocks. And yes, they chose to live there, but Bruce's Beach twenty years ago was a lot different than what's been happening now. So we've got to give them some allowance for their feelings. But this, this particular resident, so, you know, wrote in. There were about seventy-five email, just emails, that came in that were opposing this. And then there was about thirteen or fourteen that were supporters of an event at Bruce's Beach. And this is not, they signed their names to it, and they gave their addresses. It wasn't anonymous. They went ahead and they, you know, and they were, they signed each of their emails. And also too, I noticed in the, in the ecomments as well. So, so she said, "A little over a year ago, the city council voted no large groups at Bruce's Beach and the small parquets." Bruce's Beach Park is in a residential neighborhood with very limited parking, no bathroom facility. Bruce's Beach Park is in a residential neighborhood with very limited parking, no bathroom facilities or restrooms. The venue is small, the terrain is hilly and steep. The noise, the illegal parking, loud music, excessive alcohol, urinating and defecating, garbage left in the park, overflowing trash bins have been escalating as the interest in the park has increased. The cruising of visitors, you know, driving their vehicles with the pounding of loud music is also an annoyance. I've called the MBPD numerous times to ticket cars parked illegally on the north side of the park. The patrons move their cars, and five minutes later, after the police have left, they park there again. I don't feel the, you know, the Manhattan Beach Police Department does enough to enforce the illegal behaviors." The city had the special event people monitoring, I believe that was CSC, monitoring the park, parking lot below Bruce's Beach last summer. Numerous times, I asked them to address the issues in the park, and they did nothing. Sorry to complain so much, but I don't think you realize what happens when a gathering at Bruce's Beach is permitted. A city-sponsored event in this park goes against everything the council voted for. It was for good reason that the Bruce's Beach Park is not appropriate for large gatherings, city-sponsored or not." So given the fact that we heard from the residents, I kind of agree, you know, with Councilmember Lesser in finding a different venue. Polywog seems to, seems to fit the bill. I also agree, you know, with Councilmember Napolitano that this whole effort has been rushed. I mean, normally, when these things come to us, they've gone through the Planning Commission, the Parks and Recreation Commission, there's, you know, suggestions they've heard from, you know, and they consolidate all that and give us a report. So we would know facts, so we would know what's really happening, you know, in these areas. I believe there should be, you know, a celebration of Juneteenth. Just because people haven't heard of it doesn't mean that they're not living in their lives and that their lives have not been affected by what has happened over the last 50 years. We all grew up, or most of us grew up, older ones, we grew up in the era of Martin Luther King. We grew up in the era of Lyndon Baines Johnson, LBJ, creating civil rights, enacting civil rights legislation. We saw the country change. We saw the laws change to the betterment of everybody. We don't have to be reminded constantly of what that era was about. It's being taught well in the schools, I believe. It's, it's, it's a part of our lives. We all, you know, whether it's a law or not, we all have compassion for other people. We see that, and particularly in Manhattan Beach. We're highly educated, we're highly motivated to help people. So I want it to be a celebration of that. I want it to be a celebration of the fact that America has changed. We are a lot different, even from the day I was born, you know, 68 years ago. But, you know, recognize that people have that in their makeup. They taught their children, my father and mother taught me about it. I saw, I was watching live, you know, Martin Luther King's speech. I have a dream speech. Very impactful, taught to people, we know it, we live and breathe it. So let this be a celebration. Let it be well-planned, let it be well-thought-out, let it be reasonable so that everybody can enjoy it and we can get the full impact of this, you know, of an event such like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Haworth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, so I hear what everybody's saying, and what I'd like to, I have some direct comments to what you've said, Mayor Protim Franklin, but I wanted to talk about the issue at hand first. I think that I see, I see wisdom in what Councilmember Napolitano is saying about rushing this because I don't see, I don't see support for an event at Bruce's Beach. And I appreciate what you were saying about consensus and why you were elected, and I really respect that very much. And I hear about the neighbors, but I'm gonna address all of that in a minute. So what I want to say, though, is I, could we come up with direction to staff that we are committed to Juneteenth and we want, we are committed to next year, and we are committed to directing staff to come back with a robust plan for a citywide acknowledgement or, you know, celebration, whether we're partnered with the school district or other things? That would, I think, mean a lot. I don't think, if we really believe, and I think we do, that it's rushed, then let us commit to, to planning it for next year so that we're not in the same position. So that is something I would like to get support for. So do I have support for, and it not, you know, like, maybe it's a kickoff at Bruce's Beach with just a speaker?
Yes.
What, thank you.
Just one comment, yes, and then what I also heard in Councilmember Napolitano's suggestions is staff maybe comes up with proposals-
Absolutely.
-and goes to the Parks and Recreation Commission. So there's more input.
Well, did you say, no, you didn't say commission, did you?
Yeah.
Oh, you didn't, okay.
I actually was saying, go to the Parks and Rec Commission.
Yeah, engage them.
And have them work this through.
Love that idea. That's great. Love that, thank you. I do want to say, though, there is nothing inconsistent with this, with what this council decided in 2018, and I'm a little sick of being shamed for that because we did not say that the city can't have events at our own parks. So let's stop that, that misinformation. I'm sorry if that's not what you understand. There is nothing inconsistent. Am I correct? Or am I not? Maybe I'm not. It's my speech, but listen. I, and I, but I get that we don't want to, you know, do a big, it was never meant to be that, in my opinion. But I also want to say, is Bruce's Beach the only park that there are complaints about with drinking? Because I, I, it just sounds, it sounds, when we talk like this, when we say, well, at Bruce's Beach, they're drinking and they're breaking the rules. At Bruce's Beach, they're doing this. They're not doing that at Polywog, or they're not hanging out at Grandview after night drinking, or they're not on the beach-
They strive every weekend at the beach.
I know. And what I'm saying is this attention to Bruce's Beach being this driver of this behavior, I think, is not appropriate and not okay. I need to say that. So with respect to the neighbors, though, the woman who said she had called 45 times, that's terrible, right? Like, that she's really suffering in her home. She lives there next to the, you know, park and on the beach, but I, hopefully, the police, maybe we need to work on that. That's something separate. But, you know, let's just understand what we're saying. So I'm fine with, you know, focusing it differently. I really appreciate all these comments, really, really do, and would like to get support for driving it for, you know, next year. Thank you.
So if you're making a motion, this is the right time to make a motion. All right. Mayoral Tim Franklin.
So the focus has been on Bruce's Beach because the focus is on Bruce's Beach in this particular, in this particular proposal. You know, you were not on council during the time where a lot of these things, a lot of these things happened and where a lot of the complaints came in, where a lot of the folks were at least talking to me and writing in letters and emails and saying, what's going on here? They felt unsafe, there was bad behavior there. You know, it was a very tumultuous time. So you need to respect the residents and how they feel about it because it happened to them, okay? It didn't happen to the rest of us. I don't know where everybody lives exactly, but I don't think we live on the perimeter or even up, you know, within a couple of blocks of Bruce's Beach. So we have to respect that, and I don't think there's an ulterior motive here other than just wanting to get this place under control and to have a situation where somebody doesn't have to feel like they have to scurry from their car into their, you know, into their home and not feel, you know, impacted by behavior that's going on at the beach. So it should be a quiet place, it should be a reflective place. There were many, many months, maybe even still today, that's, that's why I wanted to ask the, you know, the information about the number of calls, that it has to be, you know, remediated from that.
Okay.
So-
All right.
That's what I'm listening to. I'm listening to the residents, I'm listening to people who are opposed to having a big event there. That's what we were talking about, we were talking about, well, maybe not a big event, but an event there, a special event, and that, and why would, why is the city, you know, able to do it when another group is not? So.
Comments accepted. Councilmember Lesser, then I'll speak.
I wanted to see if you wanted to speak, Mayor, and then I could-
First, I'll close it off.
Please.
After you.
Oh, I was gonna suggest, I was, that we move forward in a positive direction along the lines that I think all of us feel, that is to go forward consistent with what Councilmember Haworth and what Councilmember Napolitano have suggested, and I was gonna offer to second the amendment, but I want to hear what your remarks are, Mr. Mayor.
Well, if we could state the motion so everyone knows what they're-
All right. Do you want me to state the motion I made?
Please, state the motion succinctly.
Just so everybody knows. I mean, no motion was stated.
The motion is to direct staff, Parks and Rec staff, to work with the Parks and Rec Commission on creating a meaningful and robust celebration of Juneteenth for next year, to consider the entire city, different parks, et cetera, to come back to council with enough time to approve or oppose any ideas and suggestions. And that's-
The only suggestion I thought we talked about was just to go to the Parks and Rec Commission.
I think I said that.
Did you say that? I missed that.
I did say that. I said it the second time, not the first time. And maybe we need, maybe we need to have additional police remediation if it's a big problem, and I want to, you know, follow up on that respect.
They have a special events group among the city staff that does that.
Right.
I'll second your motion.
Thank you.
All right. We close this off here. As the mayor, I can tell you, I received more emails than anyone else. Not a surprise. And part of that, as Councilor Napolitano talked about, the priming was the perfect storm of me not being in town and our email servers going down. The only thing that did work is, thank God, is my occasional text that the city manager reached out to, to find me and make sure I could put this on the agenda for the purpose we talked about, a matter of timing. So with that said, if you take away our personal opinions, listen to our residents, it wasn't close, is three to one that we're against having an event at Bruce's Beach. Take Bruce's Beach out of it, it's Bruce's Beach Park is the correct name we're talking about here. So let's focus on that issue alone. That being said, great comments, Christie's, Rita's, a lot of people made great comments and great emails when I find was able to read them. I appreciate a lot of comments. And as Councilor Napolitano talked about, I couldn't respond back to you. I got the continual hamster wheel on my phone, so I apologize for that as well. It wasn't because I blew you off. I couldn't read, I couldn't respond back to you if I could read something. That's first and foremost. And those who try to email me today, no, let me apologize. I am so busy at council day, I usually go and get home after this is over, after our closed session tonight, till 11:30 or 12, then I can respond back to your emails. So have the courtesy to not email council the day of the meeting. Try to email us at least, the council agenda comes out on Thursday before our Tuesday meeting. You have plenty of time to read it and email us before Monday, before Tuesday. So please, if you really want a response back from us, do not wait to Tuesday council meeting to email us. If you have to get ahold of me, most of you have my cell number, you can text me. If it's that important and you forgot to email me and you want to get a message to me, you can text me, but that's a last resort. With that being said, great comments, all of my colleagues here. And I think the runs I wrote down the most were the idea that we rush something here and the fact, I think even Tim Jones said it, we're not a city known for rushing things. We have standards that we like to have here and do it the right way and do it appropriately. And also the appropriate location, as Councilmember Haworth said. Flexible and her listening to our residents' concerns, many of them founded, regardless of numbers, many of them founded. But I think it's not just checking a box here. Do it the right way. If it takes us a year, do something at Polywog Park, great, I'm all for that. I'm also lovely Phillips' idea about the Civic Center and having something here that we do for so many other things. Why do we think about that ourselves? But great ideas come from people outside of this vibe of us. It's part of our job of listening to you. We don't always agree, but we listen, and that's what we're hearing tonight. So do I think, with that said, I'm very cautious for the reasons I mentioned, but having, hosting any great, large-numbered event at a park that's not appropriately sized, bathrooms, parking, et cetera, at Bruce's Beach Park. That being said, again, other places in the city are just as nice, if not the appropriate history part of it, I get it. But if you want us to do it right, be a little more flexible on location. I'll work with you on that. All of us will work with you on that. But I'm also not a big fan of an open-ended check. Neither is our city manager, neither is finance director behind me. You've got to come with us a plan and give us enough time to do it the right way, scalable, look at the entire city. Past that point, I think a right place to, to Mayor Tim Franklin's comments, I was on that council 2018, and their request was to consider revising the rules of the parquettes at Bruce's Beach Park for events, which the council voted no. We did not open it up. That was the actual question at the time. But from that way forward, I appreciate my colleagues being open and flexible. I think we have a plan moving forward. We do recognize the event we made. In fact, I even signed something to recognize Juneteenth. So it's not like we're not as a city, but let's do it the right way, the appropriate location moving forward. With that, colleagues, we'll do a vote screen, please.
By the way, Mr. Mayor, we all were facing the same email issue. I neglect, I mean, we all, like, I had to delete my email off my, anyway, so I just want, I'm gonna pile in on that one.
You're welcome. Vote, please.
Can we just restate the motion?
So I made a motion to direct staff to work together with the Parks and Rec Commission to create events dedicated to celebrating Juneteenth next year and to not limit it to Bruce's Beach, not make a, not a grand event at Bruce's Beach, okay? But consider other, and all other opportunities. I think that's what it is.
Locations.
Locations.
So you're not, we're not committing to Bruce's Beach Park-
Right.
-for anything. If we do, it can be low-skin. We're not talking about hosting a tent and a band and everything else there. We can, other places in the city can handle this. That's the motion. Voting screen is up. Please vote.
Motion passes 5-0.
Great. Thank you all for attending tonight, appreciate your comments. We're gonna move to item L, city council requests and reports, including AB 1234. Before I do that, I do want to thank Rep. Tim Franklin, the head of courtesy who lives out of town, to go look at the Chase property for me on the floor tonight. So thank you, Joe, for doing that.
Sure.
Anyone have any, hey, we told them four reports? Anybody go anywhere exciting for city business?
City business?
Seeing none.
What's to the mural?
That counts today, yes. Item and future agenda item, this is where anyone can put an item on the agenda to be the second, to be heard of a future date. Anyone?
Council can put an item on the agenda.
Yes, council.
Not anyone.
Anyone?
On council.
Seeing none. City manager report.
Yes, just a very brief one tonight. I know we've all seen stories about potholes all over the state from all the rain that we've had, and we've seen the former governor doing his part to fill in, but may not have been a pothole.
I haven't done that yet, but I was thinking about that.
However, I just want to let you know that our Public Works crews received reports of 256 potholes since the rains began in November 22, and 100% of those potholes were repaired within two business days. So our guys are on it. Eric, you're killing it, and so hopefully we don't have any potholes. If there are any, tell us, we'll get to it very quickly. That's all I have, thank you.
Just reach the beach.
That's right.
That's right.
Use our app. City attorney report. Mr. Kearns.
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Good. Our next item is information item. I do want to point out, I did hear about, and transparency, I did this earlier, city attorney's looking at me, I am on the California League of Cities Board, and I do want to report that the Marasucci's bill was formerly known as AB 23, to lower the threshold from $900, $400.
Yep.
It is now called AB 1709. They get creative in Sacramento, changing numbers around, you have to hopscotch to follow it around, but it's called AB 1709. Those of you who are watching at home and wondering what that is, that is the bill to, Marasucci's bill to reduce the property, the theft charge. Let's see, information item, nothing else there. We, council's going to stay for closed session, so we're gonna announce an open session of I- of items to be discussed in closed session, and this is going to be, City Attorney Kearns.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council will now meet in closed session for a conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. The city's negotiators are the city manager and the acting human resources director, and it concerns the Manhattan Beach Firefighters Association.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here, and thank you all for watching. Have a good night.
Can we go live?
Yes. We're going to reconvene in the open session and close session announcement and open session from our city attorney, Ms. Kearns.
Yes, Mayor. The city council met in closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 for a conference with its labor negotiators. It concerns the Manhattan Beach Firefighters Association, and direction was given to the negotiators.
Fantastic. We are going to adjourn to April 25, 2023, Tuesday, the boards and commission meetings. So with that, thank you all, I'm sorry, 4:00 PM on April 25th.